Terry, you good when the clock turns seven? How are you?
I saw you on Friday at the trend.
Oh, yeah.
So you livestreamed.
You watched it live. Oh, good for you.
Yeah, you spoke good.
Oh, thank you.
The trend.
Better than speaking bad.
Yep.
Dan, you good?
I'd like to call this Celine City Council meeting to order if you'd rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. As always, we encourage you to sign in on the back table. There's also copies of the agenda and listening devices if you require them. Members present this evening are council members Gearbaugh, CEO, Rice, Lesh, Harmout, Mayor Potem, Dillon, and Mayor Morrow. From city staff, we have Acting City Manager Cole, Clerk Royal, and DPW Director Hopala. At this time, the chairman entertained a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
This is submitted.
Moved by CEO to approve as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rice. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As yet, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences, so we'll proceed to public comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any person may come forward at this time, make comment or question about an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Those wishing to speak are requested, but now required to state their name and address for the record. Before you begin your comments this evening, please clearly state the specific agenda item you are addressing. Please note that council will not be answering questions during this particular public comment period. Are there any citizen comments? I would defer to the city clerk. Any written comments provided in advance of tonight's meeting in which the individual wanted their remarks right at this time? Easy enough. Then we'll proceed to the first of two presentations. First up is our DPW Director, Mr. Hopala, presenting on our road millage, or street millage, that was first approved in 2018, subsequently approved by actually a larger share of the electorate several years later, and is actually due for consideration again either this year or in the not-too-distant future. So Director Hopala, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to present a little bit of history on our road millage here, some of the data of all the work that we've done, and some of the projections for some different options down the road here. So, first slide, again, as the mayor mentioned, we had a charter amendment in November of 2018 that was approved, and then in November of 2019, one mill was approved by the residents. And so that carried us from July 1 of 2020 all the way to July 1 of 2023. And then again, in November of 2022, it was put back on the ballot, and the residents voted to renew that millage again for one mill, and that is currently going through until July 1 of 2026 is when it is set to expire. So we just have it for this current fiscal year. The following fiscal year is when it would be up for expiration or renewal. So this next slide kind of shows our condition trends. So again, we utilize the PAESR data, so that's our pavement surface evaluation and rating system. And so we've got this tracked all the way back from about 2006. And as you can see, right around 2013, 2014, we really started to take a dip on both our major roads in the blue and our local roads in the orange there. And the millage was then adopted, 2019, right at the bottom of that curve. So we started to make a bit of an upswing, but really, when our transportation asset management plan was adopted in 2023, we've started to see a much more dramatic incline. And I'll get into that further as to why we actually saw that occur. So again, what is PAESR? It's that pavement surface evaluation and rating system. It's a standardized system that the Transportation Asset Management Committee has had institutionalized for the last two decades. So the state actually funds those ratings on any federal-funded eligible roads. So a lot of our major roads, the local roads, we pay for certified consultants to actually perform those ratings on those. And again, that kind of provides us guidance for appropriate capital improvement repairs or preventative maintenance. So we're going to first dive into our road rehabilitation and replacement, and then we'll kind of get into operations. So right here, we've got our road designations, our entire map of Celine delineated between our state-owned major, which is US 12, our county-owned majors, so just to the south there on Celine Ann Arbor there in Monroe, our local-owned major roads, right? So again, that's your Celine Ann Arbor industrial, woodland, maple, all of those major trunk lines, and then all of our local minor, just neighborhoods, right? Your Wildwoods, your Torwood, your North Views, and so on. So again, what's the importance of pavement management? So this graph over here on the right, I think, portrays an excellent imagery for the lifespan of a road. So a brand-new road should survive about 25 years. So when you're looking at that pavement age, you can kind of map that out at right about the midway mark is where you start to see a major drop-off. And that pavement surfaces, that pavement surface ages due to a lot of like our wet weather conditions, the frost off effect that we get in the winter and the spring months. It really just starts to infiltrate into that base material, starts to stir up all the compaction, and that's when we start to see deflections, we start to see depressions in the pavement, which, again, with proper roadway maintenance and rehabilitation, we can extend the useful life of those roadways well past those designed 20 to 25 years. So again, the ratings down below, our PAESR rating scale is anywhere from 10, being brand-new, paved yesterday, to 201. And so down below, our 9s and 10s don't need any maintenance required to them. Once we start to get into our 8s, that may be, hey, we just repaved Torwood, for instance. We're starting to see some of those joints open up, and we want to get those cracks sealed, make sure we don't get any water infiltrating into there, and again, preserve that life five to seven years. Seven, that's when we start to see our routine maintenance, like I mentioned, the crack sealing or some minor patching here or there. Really, ratings five and six is when we start to get into those preventative treatments. So those micro-surfacing that we saw in Celine River Drive, or up in Wildwood, or the Arboretum neighborhoods. And then getting into ratings three and four, that's when we're actually seeing structural integrity loss. And so that's what prompts us to do, like the four-inch milling overlay in the Torwood neighborhood, all the way to, we can do three-inch milling overlay, two-inch, all depends on the condition of that pavement. But again, ratings three and four see that actual capital reconstruct and rehabilitation required. And then ratings one and two, we're starting to see full reconstructs. That's not just a milling overlay. That's getting into the subbase, readdressing the compaction. It could be eight inches, it could be 14 inches of earth and stone and everything else that needs to be removed, replaced, recompacted before the pavement is actually applied. Again, that's worst-case scenario with a rating one or two. So snapshot of Celine roads by our classifications. Again, we've got about 21 lane miles of local streets, about 13 and 1/2 lane miles of major roads, and you can start to see our average PAESR ratings just over the last five years. So our local streets were at about 4.99, started to take a dip on the 4.68, but made a dramatic improvement this last go-around with a 5.79. Again, a lot of those preventative treatments that you saw us do over the last two years, that's a direct correlation with that updated PAESR rating. Same thing with our major roads. Those tend to be much larger projects. Those tend to be more of the capital improvement, where they're at least a two-inch milling overlay. So staying around that six-and-1/2 mark, seven's probably your ideal mark you'd like to be at, but staying in roughly good shape there. So overall, we've got about a 5.97, which is right where we projected ourselves to be in our transportation asset management plan and previous road millage recommendations. And then on the right, so again, we look at our overall PAESR rating, but this really breaks things down into those good categories, those fair categories, and the poor. Again, the fair is getting into preventative maintenance aspects. The poor is really starting to get into the capital investments. So on our majors, we're doing exceptionally well with just 17% being in our poor, whereas you see statewide trends, that number hovers more around 40%. Meanwhile, we've got about 31.9% in the good category statewide. You're looking at about 20. So doing better than the trend on majors. On locals, again, good is at about 38%. That's right on par with what we're seeing statewide. And then on the poor side of things, again, we're at 39%, and we're seeing roughly 50% to 55% statewide. So again, doing better than the trend there. Again, this just shows our whole road network. You can start to see all that green is everything in that eight-to-10 category, all of our recent construction, woodland, industrial, Wildwood, Torwood, even some sections down at Arboretum. Then we see a decent chunk of yellow that will start to need some of that preventative maintenance, but there's definitely a decent amount of red that needs to be addressed sooner rather than later. Again, picking the right treatment, right? So as I already mentioned, one to two, that full reconstruct, three to four, a milling fill, that five and six, that cape fog, that cape fog seal and micro-surfacing, that seven eight, just doing that simple crack sealing. As you can see, it's 50 cents per square yard on the crack ceiling. So that's an easy preventative maintenance we can do while the road's still in good condition, again, to extend it five to seven years. So a lot of those types of things are what we've been focusing on the last few years. This gives us a snapshot of calendar years 24 and 25, but really, these are the last three fiscal years worth of projects. So we can see the costs affiliated with them. Wildwood, again, that surface treatment, but that was almost three miles of road. Torwood being that four-inch milling fill. And so that's equated to about 1.5 million for that much pavement to be milled out. Woodland and industrial, again, 840,000, but that was a three-inch. Luther's, that was actually a six-inch. That needed to be done with that having some industrial traffic going through there, and so on and so forth. You can see we had some different cul-de-sacs and courts that were milled and filled. Arboretum had surface treatment with milling fill at a court at the end of it, and then Celine River Drive, and then some of our crack ceiling citywide. So I thought it'd be nice to kind of show some imagery with this, right? So this was a few years back, but this is Highland Drive. This one required a full-depth reconstruct. When we're doing a full-depth reconstruct, we really want to just dig once, right? So we're analyzing the water main useful life left, the condition of the sanitary sewer, the condition of the storm sewer, what issues we've had in the past, and if there's any maintenance required, right? So on this, we needed to completely remove and replace the sanitary sewer, so you can see the new Y's for the lead extensions. You can see the road on the left there was easily a one or two with the alligator cracks. Structural integrity, it looks like we've had to do a patch, likely a water main break there as well. And so this actually cost us only 500,000, but it was only a third of a mile, right? So if this was a project for one mile worth of road, you're looking at just shy of $2 million to do all of that work. So quite substantial. Again, Torwood Neighborhood, as I mentioned, just under two miles, about four inches, four and 1/2 inches, with just some ADA upgrades at the intersections. That cost us about $2 million bucks, but that did extend that useful life a good 15 years for us. And then the Wildwood Neighborhood, again, just under three miles, but that micro-surfacing that we did only cost us 400,000, right? Still extends that life anywhere from five to 10 years on that. But as you can see, three miles for 400,000 versus two miles for 2 million, you can kind of start to see why we're looking for those preventative maintenance treatments. And we can cover a lot more ground and keep our PAESR ratings in a good limbo there, rather than waiting for our roads to deteriorate and having to do these milling fills or these full reconstructions. So now we'll kind of get into the operational needs. I love this imagery because when we think of roads, we tend to just think of the roads, or we just tend to think about the things that are below the road. We often forget about everything kind of to the east and the west, right? So we've got streetlights that were required to maintain, the actual pavement markings, the storm sewer on the curb and gutters, the street signs, the culverts that run under those roads, the traffic signals, the sidewalks. Those are all coming out of our road funds, right? Our major 202 and our local 203. So those are also eating away at the same funds that our capital improvement reconstruction projects and our capital preventative maintenance projects are pulling from as well. So some of those operational expenses in the road fund, we're using those for snowplowing. We're using those for leaf removal, pavement markings, crack sealing, sign maintenance, just simple road patching, storm sewer jetting and cleaning, catch basin repairs, streetlight repairs, and our sidewalk repair program. And so on average, that's costing us about $800,000. As we start to look into our finances, it all equates to roughly just under $2.3 million of fiscal year is what we're looking at. So again, if you're pulling out 800,000 of that, we're leaving us with about 1.5 for those capital needs. If I go back a few slides again, we'll see that Torwood neighborhood, like those types of projects are really eating up all those funds. So we're having to be creative with those, spread that dollar. So again, our current millage equates to about 632,000 per one mill at the moment. We also received 250,000 from Washtenaw County Road Millage, Act 51 funding for our lane miles for both major and local, equates to about 1.18. But again, that's divvied up between the major and local road funds. And then about every third year, we're receiving some of that federal aid money, which we know right now is in limbo as well. It's not as reliable. So you can look at that number being closer to about 2.1 million that we can actually rely on year-over-year. So this is now kind of a projection of where we're headed with our PAESR ratings. So currently, we stand at a 5.9. That's just above where we projected if we were to follow our Transportation Asset Management Plan. So we're in good shape. Our scenario one, shown in the dark blue there, shows if the millage were to expire. And so that starts to drop off there, and over the next 10 years, our average PAESR rating goes from about a 5.9, almost a six, down to about a 5.4. Scenario two, we extend that one mill. We're hovering right around the six mark there, just kind of keeping the status quo going. And then scenario three would be if we were to renew the mill and add one additional mill, that's when you start to see a dramatic improvement in that PAESR rating. So we're jumping all the way from a six upwards to a seven over the next 10 years. Now again, I've really driven home that good, that fair, and that poor portions of those PAESR ratings. So currently, we're hovering at about 30% overall on our poor condition, and then another, what is that, 30% on our fair, and then just over 30%, about 35% on the good. And so this kind of delineates, again, if our millage expires, that poor ramps up a bit, the fair really ramps up, and our good is dramatically decreased. Scenario two, we extend the one mill. We're really just kind of keeping, again, that status quo. We increase how much fair we have, so a lot more preventative maintenance and some more milling and fills, but a lot less of those eight-to-10 roads. And then scenario three, if we extend the millage and add an additional, that fair equates for quite a large amount of our road network, and we dramatically decrease the amount of poor-conditioned roads. So again, this just all reiterates, we're doing everything we set out to do in 2023 with our Transportation Asset Management Plan. Our strategy did propose that those capital preventative maintenance accounts for about 80% of the lane miles, receiving the treatment year-over-year, but only reflects about 12% of that cost. Whereas the heavy rehabilitation, the reconstructs, the large-scale four-inch milling fills only account for about 20% of the lane miles, but now 88% of the total cost. So then these last two years, we were right on par with that. Again, the capital preventative maintenance accounted for 81% of the lane miles and 23% of the total cost, and then our heavy rehabilitation only accounted for 19% of the lane miles, but a whopping 77% of the total cost. So that's where we're at today, right? We believe we've got a good trajectory. Our Transportation Asset Management Plan is yielding the results that we anticipated, and so we're continuing to maintain our road assets in good and fair condition, balancing that, those capital preventative maintenance and the full reconstructs and rehabilitations, while we continue to maintain and perform condition assessments of all of our utilities under the road, as well as all of our assets to the east and west of the road as well. So really trying to strategically select roads in poor condition for reconstruct. Again, we just want to have a dig-one's model. If we're going to be going down and doing a four-inch milling fill or a full reconstruct, we want to make sure that that road we're selecting, we've analyzed all of the utilities underneath, and we're preparing the best capital improvement plan possible. And then an annual look back to assess that progress. And so I think the data that we collected this year over the last two years is phenomenal, and I think it really paints a great picture of how far we've spread that dollar and how much of the community we've touched with it. And then again, annually, just reassessing what our capital improvement plan is and what modifications we can make, if any. And so with that, that kind of concludes my end of the presentation. I welcome any questions you all may have for me.
That was very well done. Thank you, Director Hopala. Acting City Manager Cole, before we open it up for questions, comments from the dais, is there anything you would like to add for the record?
At this time, thank you very much, Director Hopala. You covered the topic very well.
Director Hopala, this is a question primarily for the public's benefit. Is it your intent, then, that a resolution approving the street millage for the November ballot would be considered at our next regular council meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. So the consensus that needs to be developed is whether we want to go with the recommendation of seeking a renewal of one mill or some different dollar amount.
Cool.
Very good. Let me start at the end of the dais this evening and work my way back to council members Gearbaugh and Rice. So I'll begin with Councilmember Harmout. Do you have questions or comments for Director Hopala regarding his presentation on the street millage?
I do. Very good presentation. It's really important. There's a shortage for funding with roads, and particularly with local roads, and I think having a strategic plan that is really identified the way that we're approaching it, the way that you're approaching it, is really key to our, you know, appropriate fund expenditures. And I know that this is not an additional allotment of funds, right? This is just carrying forward what we've been already anticipating and already been having.
Yes, yeah, the one mill would just be reinstating what we've been utilizing for the last six years.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Yeah, just so that I'm clear, Councilmember Harmout, you support the extension then of a one mill?
Yes, I do.
Very good. Councilmember Lesh?
You know, in my time living in Celine, I've really noticed that this phaser system has done great things, so I will be in support of it.
Councilmember CEO?
I do, and support it. I would ask this question now, Director Hopala. Does our passing our own millage locally take some of the pressure off the county and the federal government so that they don't feel the need as much to help support us?
We'll continue asking, but I think for us, right, it's important that we try and be as self-sustainable as possible, right? I don't want to have to rely on other sources. Us as a community, we need to rely on what resources we have available to us. So yes, but as you can see, these projects aren't just looking at the roads, right? There are infrastructure needs at all of them. Now, if we get into sanitary sewer or water, those do have their own funds that we can pull from for those utility needs, but you're looking at full reconstructs now, and that is quite a hefty bill to pay on those road projects. And if I may, just going back a little bit, as we get back into some of the red on this, there's quite a decent amount, and a lot of it is on that local road that typically are not eligible for federal aid. They're not Class A-rated roads. And so that really is just dependent on us. And so that really is just dependent on us. Sometimes the county will assist in those local road funds, but again, it's relying on our own resources.
So would you consider, instead of going for a two mill, for one and a half or one and three quarter?
I will leave that to city council to make that judgment. Again, I think the data really speaks for itself.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember CEO. Mayor Protam Dillon?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hopla. We had a chance to speak earlier today and kind of go through the presentation, answer some of my questions. The one slide, and I think it's, I can't tell if it's page 19 or 23, it's this one.
Yes.
This one had a big impact for me because when you look at it, if we sort of stay status quo, we're just going to stay pretty even. Adding an extra mill, we would substantially increase in the near term and long term the benefits. So that was a conversation that you and I had had was, you know, should we be looking at this? We've already identified through our CIP, the Asset Management Group, there's definitely a need. And I mean, obviously the red in the street diagram showed that. So one of the things I would like to do, and I'm not necessarily in favor of more taxes, but I think this particular tax or this millage has a very direct impact on our community. It's a very tangible result. And so I would like this body to consider moving beyond the one mill. And whether it's we do an up to two where we can scale it out over the course of it and sort of estimate what we would need, I think could be very beneficial to us long term as well as in the very near term. And so I'm hoping that people will look at that and see the impact that we can have because we have identified projects that, I mean, that need this. And we've delayed projects due to lack of funding. And this would sort of keep us in a continuous rotation of being able to fund those, some of the larger projects while also doing the smaller local street projects.
Thank you. Councilmember Girba?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. And for me, I'm looking at, in 2023, we allowed a 0.3, we had three tenths of a mill that was for millage for roads that expired and wasn't renewed at that time. So if we would have had that three tenths plus this mill, you would have had initial. So for me, I'm looking at wanting to restore that millage plus what we've done here. So we'd have 1.3 to at least go to roads. Actually, another 0.5 would probably be best. What my concern is, is when I look at our capital improvement plan, we have $29 million in roads and we have a shortfall, if you include sidewalks and sewers and all of that, and we have a shortfall of $13.4 million in just five years. I don't know where we're going to make that up. The state is trying to do something, but they're trying to move a billion dollars out of tax money that's generated from gas taxes, that's taking away from the schools and moving it into roads. So there's a whole controversy with that. So we don't know that money's coming. And when I look at the projects that we're doing, it's major roads. There's not anything happening. Lewis, Russell, some of these other streets aren't even planned for the next five to six years and those roads failed 10, 15 years ago. So as I look at your PESR rating and agreeing with my colleague, Mayor Protam Dillon, trying to show and get that up there, my biggest concern, and I think that we've talked about it, even if we have this money come in, do we have the capacity to manage those projects? To add more projects and road so that our staff, or will we have to be basically depending on more outside engineering, increasing the costs and so forth?
Yeah, so it's a great question, right? And I don't have a direct answer. What I can say is the roads will never be perfect, right? For our PESR ratings, you want to see a good distribution between your good, your fair and your poor, right? You don't want to see everything good all at once because it's going to fail all at once. So that PESR rating has kind of a sweet spot, right? And I think we're starting to edge closer to that. That 6.7, 6.8 is really that sweet spot where we can continue the trajectory of what we've been doing, right? So doing the preventative maintenance on top of the capital improvement. I would say that a lot of your local roads that you just mentioned have a lot of utility needs as well, right? And there are other funding mechanisms that can help supplement those types of projects. Now they take a bit more time to plan and prepare for, right? And so that's what we're doing right now this year, is a lot of that planning and assessment of those utilities. Because we've identified, I mean, it's easy to drive around here, look at a map and know which roads need that assistance, right? But I think, Jen, a few meetings ago, you had asked the question, what's this scale, right? What's this metric that we're using? And it's that risk of failure and that criticality of failure, right? And so we want to make sure we measure all of that. On every single road, we're overlaying our storm sewer, our water main, our sanitary sewer, right? Where are we having water main breaks at? Where are we having sewer backups at? Where are we having drainage issues and sinkholes? And so I think for me, right, it's a long-winded answer, but we'll never, yes, our capital improvement plan is, right now, the way it looks, is a, this is what we would like to do, these are the needs that we've identified, these are the roads that we feel we need to get to. What this, what we're starting to do now with a lot more of the assessment of the utilities is really start to project out timelines, right? Timeframes, identifying in order which roads we plan to identify first. But as I said at the very last slide there, this will be an annual evaluation, right? Those criteria, the risk of failure and the criticality are going to change on a scale, right? I can't vacate the pipe on a water main to see the interior condition. I know the material, I know the diameter, I know the year it was installed, but those things can be very reactive. And all of a sudden, we start to have breaks and, oh God, we got to rip up the road now, right? And so that can move that metric a ton. So we're not, we're never going to have all the funds necessary to get all of our roads up to where they need to be. I think the question for you all is, what are you comfortable with, right? What is that level of service and what is that condition of these roads that you're comfortable with? I think that's the true question.
And I guess that's where my question was, do you feel we have the staffing and the ability to complete, if we were to give you another half mill, to complete that work within the five years? Because I still, and maybe you could help me, Acting City Manager, when we were projecting this shortfall of $13 million, did that assume that we were still going to continue this one mill? So that's where I'm looking at, is that we're not catching up. We're in fact going to get even farther behind because of what we're doing. And so if we gave you more money, can we achieve it with the staffing, with the thing that we're doing?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, the team that we have in place, the groundwork that we've put in place, right? It's putting us on a trajectory. Like I showed, even if you just extend that mill, we're not dipping. We're not going back down. We're keeping that sweet spot where we're at. Again, little supplemental funds would help that PESR rating increase and get us to a better point. And we absolutely have the staffing, the resources to get us to that point.
Okay. And then my last question, and you're new, I know. You've only been here six months and we're looking at this. What we've seen is a number of projects that have been proposed over the last three or four years that have now completely fallen off the CIP. You show the examples on the road PESR ratings and such, like all of Old Creek subdivision, which is Maripool and all of that. There were proposals to rip up the streets, cut down all the trees, do all of that. It now seems like it's fallen off. So you're assuring us that the reevaluation every year has made an assessment that says that project does not need to be done, even though we said it should have been done two years ago, and now it's completely fallen off.
So I guess the best way to answer that one in particular, right? Or many of those roads that at one time were identified and maybe fell by the wayside, right, is that utility piece, right? Getting the assessment of those utilities. So we know over in the Maripool area, we have a major drainage deficiency. So yeah, the wheels were in motion to get that road constructed, but really that was well before our transportation asset management plan. That was before our city engineer came in, Tasha, who's really helped kind of transform this whole thing, right? And so now it was, hey, pump the brakes before we repave a road and need to dig it back up. Or there's still persistent problems that are degradating that road well quicker than that useful life, right? Instead of having 25 years, you may get 10 years out of that road. So it was pumping the brakes and really starting to look at, we need to adopt a plan. We need to be strategic. We need to look at all of the elements as well.
Well, that was her recommendation to do Maripool and some of that. So even though she was here, she did assess those things and that was part of her. So some of it is her responsibility. So now we're back to trying to determine what we're going to do. That's fine for me. Again, for me, if that 0.5 would help address storm sewers and some of that piece that we can't get completed because we don't have the funds and we're holding off fixing roads because of that, that's where my support is. So I'm looking at either a 0.3, 1.3 to 1.5.
Thank you. Councilmember Rice?
Thank you for this and thank you for the explanation as to sort of why we kind of take a step back and look at things. I know things pop up. I think what might be helpful to my council colleagues and I is, you know, in like weekly communique or even quarterly, maybe like quarterly updates on like, you know, we talked about this, but here's where we are with it. We hit this bump in the road or we've seen that there's a utility issue here or something like that. Because I think we hear these things and then like two years later, we're like, oh, what about that thing that we heard? And these are conversations that are happening operationally behind the doors and it makes perfect sense in your offices. But then we forget about it and we hear from neighbors and they say, why aren't you doing our street like you said you were going to do? Like, I live on Northian Arbor Street and I know that we have had this thing on the plans for year after year after year, but there's so many issues that we've come into with that. So just helping us explain that to the folks that live on those streets is really helpful. So just little periodic updates. But this is really helpful in kind of seeing what we're looking at and what we're looking toward in the future. I would agree to perhaps looking at even raising the mill. But what I would like, if we could get this, Acting City Manager Cole, can we get a breakdown of all of our mills, when things are expiring, kind of what we're looking at here? So we have just kind of in front of our face, kind of a dashboard of like, if we go up here, oh, that's right, we also have this one and this one, just so that we can talk to our community about, you know, why it is that we think that we have the ability to, you know, none of us want to raise taxes, but I want to be able to look at something that can say, okay, this is something that we're really focused on right now. This might fall off later because we've already done this and then we don't need to renew this mill. You know, I want to be able to have those kind of more informed conversations with people, if you could help us with that.
That's no problem at all. We have a document that I think we can easily modify to depict everything that you're talking about, so we can bring that next meeting if that's...
Yeah, I mean, no rush on that. I think it's just one of those things where, you know, like I said, as we have these conversations, you know, certain things make sense to us, but us being able to more, you know, in a more articulate way, talk to our community about why taxes look the way that they do, why things, you know, why their street, why Russell Street is an absolute mess and, you know, has been for ages and had a sinkhole a few weeks ago and things like that, you know, it makes sense when you talk to us in this manner, but it's really hard for us to not just go, yeah, I know, you know? So, but other than that, that's all I have to say. Thanks so much.
Well, let me add a few things. Again, Director Hopla, excellent and very thorough presentation. We appreciate that and I'm sure the community members who are in the audience this evening or who may be watching this at home will find it quite enlightening. This conversation is very fortuitous. Our state senator hosted a town hall coffee hour here in Celine on Saturday, in which I attended, as did Mayor Protam Dillon and Councilmember Girba. Obviously, a wide array of topics were discussed, but Act 51 was mentioned. And Senator Irwin reminded us that Act 51 dates back to 1951. So for a little bit of perspective, when G. Menon Williams was governor of Michigan more than 70 years ago, great governor by the way. But the formula is dated, it's antiquated, although it has been amended and revised a few times in the subsequent decades. One thing that is very clear that Senator Irwin was quite forceful on this past weekend was that the urban counties, Washtenaw, Wayne, Oakland, Macomb, Kent, Ingham, Genesee, are donor counties to the more rural counties. Because the way the formula works is that if you have particularly unpaved roads, you benefit. So the formula doesn't work, it's dated. And we also, as a state, do not provide enough funding to maintain our state-owned roads, but also our municipal and county-owned roads. Particularly, as been mentioned by many of my colleagues this evening, we do not derive any significant funding for local streets. Dollars go to the Michigan Abs, the Maples, the Ann Arbor, Austin, et cetera. So, correct me if I'm wrong, the proposal that is before us would be to renew at the same rate, which is one mill for a three-year period?
Yeah, so we were just going before council to at least renew the existing millage, yes.
I would be, you and I spoke briefly today, I would be in favor of requesting the voters reapprove the one mill for a three-year period. That's not very long. That does provide us some flexibility and time to assess our options moving forward. I am mindful, of course, that the water in the well is finite and that the cost of living here in the Celine community is already high. I had actually lunch with the superintendent today, who made me aware that the ISD will likely have a millage on the November ballot. There'll be obviously other renewals in the ensuing years. And I think there's other taxing jurisdictions that will be requesting new millages. I think what comes to mind would of course be the Celine Fire Department, that I think is very likely to ask for some financial support in the next probably 12 to 24 months. Obviously, if we had more resources, I'd love to devote them to roads. I am mindful, of course, that I am just one of seven, and this is ultimately a decision that will be voted on by the electorate of Celine. I think the alternative that was articulated this evening by Councilmember Girba seems reasonable. And if the council member can correct me, so what you would suggest would be to ask the voters to approve up to essentially 1.3 mills, noting, of course, that a bond proposal that previously funded road maintenance fell off the tax rolls, I believe, last summer?
Yeah, we're going to part of that. I mean, at least it would fund some component of additional road work, whatever. The other thing is you could do a one and ask for a separate 0.3 or 0.5 mill. One be a renewal, the other one be an increase and to see whether or not that would play out.
I don't, I think that is a reasonable alternative, noting, of course, that we seem to have a little bit of disagreement between whether we want to go the direction of a straight renewal at one or increase it. I want to jump back. The reason I brought up the Act 51 issue is that the road that we're on, pun intended, at the state level is just not sustainable. And if we don't start infusing our local units of government with more cash to fund road maintenance, there will continue to be a decline in the quality of our major and local streets in the years ahead. So obviously numerous people at the state level have talked about that. I'm not optimistic that it's going to change anytime soon, but I'm always hopeful. Perhaps this is, I know this is a question for Acting City Manager Cole, because she also previously served as city treasurer. Can you remind us, and if you don't have the information this evening, that's fine. I don't mean to put you on the spot. But to Mr. Girba's point, there's actually two bond proposals, street bond proposals that fell off the summer tax bills in recent years. One was approved in 2001, so it was a 20-year bond proposal, so it would have fallen off in 2021. And then the other one dated back to 2024, 2004 or 2005. So it just fell off either last year or this year. Can you confirm the dollar, the amounts of those?
I don't know those off the top of my head, but I can confirm those.
Maybe in the analysis that you provide, per Councilmember Rice's suggestion, that would be helpful. Can I do just another real quick sort of head count? I started at the end with Councilmember Harmout, but again, I want to ask so that we prepare the necessary paperwork and resolution in advance of our next meeting, which I believe is on August the 3rd. Are you still comfortable or in favor of a straight renewal of one mill for a three-year period of time?
Yes.
Okay.
And I would make an additional comment. I would be amendable to other proposals, but I think we have to have more data to understand what would that 0.3 do, you know, would that do to actually, do we have the capacity, would we do? And I do have a little bit of questions about the lines and how one, you know, increases where the other one, you know, falls off, not as, you know, steep. So I think that I would be amendable to changing that, but I am right now at one mill.
Yeah, that's reasonable. Councilmember Lash?
I'm going to go with one and possibly others.
Okay. Councilmember CEO?
I agree, one for sure, and I'd like to see additional so we can continue to make improvement.
Okay. Mayor Protam Dillon?
Yes, definitely increase.
Councilmember Girba? Councilmember Rice? So I would guess I would defer to the DPW director and Acting City Manager. Are you clear on what sort of information and data needs to be provided in the next couple of weeks? And I'm assuming, this is a question for the city clerk, when that resolution is considered at our next council meeting to ask the voters, or actually, excuse me, what we're really doing is approving something for the upcoming November ballot, but we can kind of plug and play with the numbers when we come to that next meeting in two weeks. Is that correct?
Correct. Well, we'll have a resolution and the resolution has to be passed, but we can change the numbers in the resolution at that time.
Okay. Based on our discussion and debate, okay?
I will have, I actually have a resolution from the attorney, so I will be able to work with City, Acting City Manager Cole, and we will work together to get that.
Okay. Okay. I mean, I think it's pretty clear, the consensus is definitely renewal. I think the topics for discussion in two weeks' time is, what is the duration of the millage? Do we want to go with the three or four years, which we've previously done, since it was first adopted by the electorate in 2018? And then secondarily, what's the, what's the dollar amount? It looks like we're somewhere, we're going to, we're going to fall somewhere between one mill and 1.5 mills.
Correct. And then the previous one had, it was a three-year with an ability to renew. Do we want that one, this one, to say that also, or do we want that to come where a council can decide that on August 4th, what, how many years they want it for?
I mean, if folks have some thoughts off the top of their heads, the chair would welcome that.
I do, in the past, it seemed to work.
Yeah, yeah. A three or four-year period?
That's the way he worded it. I just wanted to make sure I was on the right track.
And of course, this body can always, as many taxing jurisdictions do, you can always ask for the renewal before the deadline.
Right.
So it might expire in, let's say, 2028. You could always put it on a ballot in 2027. Okay. All right. Anything else for us?
No, I think, I think that's...
Oh, go ahead. Yeah.
Thank you. Just very quickly, I just want to double-check the date. So if we were to decide on something in a resolution at our next meeting in August, what is the due date for having that turned into the state? And does that give us any leeway if they want any information changed? Or we not looking at ballot language yet? It's just the resolution?
The resolution is the ballot language.
And it goes to the county, not the state.
Right. Yeah, and we have until September 12th. It has to be back to me to be able to give to the county to put the correct language. So we send it on to the county, they review it, and then they send it back to me. And then I will make sure that we're all on the same page before.
But the absolute deadline to have something on the November ballot is September the 12th?
For any kind of a ballot language.
Okay.
For council, it's July 22nd, 4:00.
Okay. Very helpful. Mr. Hopla, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Look forward to revisiting this issue in two weeks' time. Director Detling, we appreciate your patience, and you're joined, of course, by Tracy Marion and Lindsey Gibson from Celine Main Street. We welcome you all. As soon as Mr. Hopla relinquishes the podium, it is yours. Do we need to have IT pull up a PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay. Of course, Mary, make sure that the green light is illuminated at the base of that microphone. You can adjust the podium to...
Is there a computer up here so I can follow, or should I just give you the... Got it. Okay. Hello, everybody. For the record, my name is Mary Detling, and I've been the executive director for Celine Main Street now for just over two and a half years. I can't believe it's gone so fast. And I have met some amazing people, and learned a lot of things, and had a lot of fun along the way. So it's been a little while since I've been able to give you all a formal update on what Celine Main Street has been up to and what we're planning, and I look forward to sharing that with you tonight. As we look to renew our contract with you this evening, I encourage you guys to share any ideas or suggestions that you might have in how Celine Main Street can move forward, and what things might align with your mission, or your strategic plan and mission, and what might align with ours as well. I've broken down my presentation here into three of the four points of the Main Street system. The fourth one is organization, which involves fundraising and volunteer management. We're pretty transparent about that on our, on our impact report, which comes out every December-ish. So I'd be happy to forward that to everybody if you, if you want that information as well.
Can I stop you real quick, Director Detling? Does everybody receive that document that Mary just made reference to?
The impact report?
Yeah, do you receive the impact report? No, Mr. Girbaugh?
I probably have. I just made, I've looked at it.
It's very possible I sent it to you last December, too, because the impact report follows the state fiscal year, so that ends in, I think it's, ends up in March over.
So it's only prepared annually in December of each calendar year?
Correct. So that's by the time, that's the time that we have the final copy of it.
Well, the folks can look through their email accounts. If you don't have it for whatever reason, I'm sure Ms. Detling would welcome an email from you, and she'd be happy to provide it.
Absolutely.
Sorry to interrupt.
So to get things started, I did want to remind everybody of our mission statement here. So Celine Main Street is a 501(c)(3) community-driven nonprofit dedicated to guiding our downtown towards its most vibrant future. We operate as a cultural and commercial hub for entrepreneurship, innovation, entertainment, and the arts. Downtown Celine aims to be an inclusive place where everyone feels welcome. Authenticity and friendliness make Downtown Celine an extraordinary location for work, small business enterprise, humanscale investment, and a wonderful place to visit, work, or call home. That can be found on our website, which we updated last year as well. So in 2024, when it comes to economic vitality, last year, we were awarded about $350 in regards to a sign grant, and we were awarded over $50,000, or just $50,000, through the MEDC. $25,000 went to Drop Top Pizza as a Match on Main program, and another $25,000 we received as a vibrancy grant to help make downtown more vibrant, and we used that during the holiday season for the holiday lights and holiday celebration. We hosted our first punk rock Christmas concert, and we made some changes to the Coco Crawl. We also worked with the Downtown Professionals Network to create a Y Celine recruitment document and incentives for bringing businesses into downtown. We also helped launch the social district by designing and purchasing signage and creating the operations and maintenance plan. So big year last year in terms of economic vitality. This year, in 2025, we've awarded one sign grant so far, and that was to Clay and Code, a new business going in at 106 West Michigan Avenue, I think the address is, that's at the old Rock, Paper, Scissors location. We're waiting to hear back on a Match on Main grant this year for metric marketing. They're looking to open up a specialty market and cafe in their secondary space, which is on the south side of their building, and that will be announced at the end of July. We thought it was going to be announced the end of June, and they postponed it. And we received the vibrancy grant again this year. This time, it is for Painting Leather Bucket Alley, the concrete floor. This idea was brought to us by Janet Dillon, Councilmember, Mayor Protam, Janet Dillon, sorry. And we first went to the Arts and Culture Committee, I talked about it there as well. They were not interested in taking on a project of this size at this time, so I was like, well, I can do that, because Leather Bucket Alley is right there. And we all know that placemaking and building a welcoming environment will bring more people downtown and invite more people to stay longer. So with that in mind, we just recently received the funds, and I am going to place a call for professional muralists, both online, there's a couple online locations, as well as on our website, and I will have a local flyer as well that will go out. I want to focus on attracting a local artist or somewhat semi-local in this region, and they want them to be experienced with large-scale murals and facilitating community art as well, because the idea is to have this be a community art project. We will have a professional muralist design it, put down the outlines of it, and then hopefully, it'll be a well-intended paint-by-numbers sort of situation, but also leaving with other things. One of the ideas that I had in mind was leaving your footprint back there as well, as part of the, using the same colors of the mural, and so that would be a good idea as well. We'll see what other ideas come up with it, but the call for it will also contain other specifics, including I want to see what their design will be, and what, I will give them suggestions on what to include, and I also want to know what type of paint and sealant that they would use for, for that area. A lot of concerns have been brought up in regards to the sleekness of regular paint. That's important. There is certain types of paint that can be used on the concrete to make it less slippery, and there are types of sealants and things to protect it for quite some time. So that's important. So we're hoping, again, that this brings more people into downtown and lets them feel more relaxed and ready to see that space. So I'm looking forward to that. The idea, of course, was to do it during, during farmers market hours, too, Saturday mornings, the businesses aren't open, so it won't affect the businesses that back into the alley as much, so. Yeah, and that's when a lot of people are downtown. So this year, actually, yeah, so this year in design, so this is the design screen. This is where we work on making things beautiful in downtown. We re-hung 84 veterans banners this year, 16 new banners. So our banner rehanging program and the rehanging fee has made room for people to take their banners home if they no longer live in the Celine area, or don't want to have their loved ones banner, or their own banner hung in every year. So we've made room for 16 new banners. That was just this year. We did the same about last year. I think we re-hung 18 new banners last year. And this year, we were able to order six new pairs of brackets, so we're adding six more locations on poles for new banners. We also received 46 sponsors for the Bee Blumen plant flower basket program, and 21 of them were new this year. We do plan on continuing these initiatives into 2025 and 2026, and we're in the very beginning stages now of thinking about adding another issue, another item to our list of to-dos. I mean, very, very beginning stages, but we're kind of hoping to engage volunteers to plant native flowers and plants around the West Henry Street parking lot, because that's, it's, right now, it's kind of bare, and it would be very cool to have, I think, a native flower garden there to kind of draw more people into Celine as well. Okay. So this is some unique visitors information that we got, and I know it's going back to 2023, that's not a typo, that is correct, but we got it last year. So unfortunately, I haven't been able to share it with you all live yet, but I wanted to do so tonight to kind of show you about a program that Michigan Main Street is helping with, and this is in regards to events and promotion. So this was put together by Placer AI, which is a program, and they did it through a contract with Main Street America, and then Main Street Michigan contracted with them to give us information about our, about our downtowns and about one specific event for 2023. So what they were able to share with us is, based on our, based on our census report, we have 8,948 residents, and in 2023, we had 171.3,000 visitors visit downtown Celine 662.7,000 times. Those, those numbers, the visitors refer to the unique device, usually a smartphone, so they track smartphones when they get to a location, things. So while they're not 100%, they do give you a really good idea of when the busy days are, when they're not, and about how many people are down here at a time. The visits refer to any travel by a visitor inside the boundaries of the Main Street District that has to be 10 minutes long, so it's not picking up on the cars that are just traveling through. They have to be here for at least 10 minutes. And the visit frequency is the number of visits per visitor over the duration of the report. So over the duration of the report, we had 662.7,000 visitors. So with that said, we can go to the next page. We did find some data about the other things, but what we learned is that in 2024, or in 2023, well, these numbers are more important than 2024, because they did share with us the same type of comprehensive, the same numbers, but they didn't give us the same type of comprehensive report. So in 2024, Summer Fest brought in the most visitors to downtown Celine with just over 7,000 visitors on August 10th. That was the number one busiest day. A total of 11,168 for the weekend. Coco Crawl and the Holiday Parade brought in almost 6,000 that day. Oktoberfest is a total event, brought in almost 10,000. Additionally, every Thursday of Salty Summer Sounds saw a spike in visitors. So on some days, we might have 1,000 visitors, maybe we had 1,500 on Salty Summer Sounds So those are some really cool numbers that we get now from the, from the state. So the 109, this is another thing that we, you know, we've been tackling for a long, long time, since even before I was here, but we received our final occupancy at the end of March this year. We've hosted several events so far, including successful comedy nights, portrait painting workshops, more and more. We're open to hosting private events, and we are looking for the community to submit ideas for programming. So if you want to see, if you are a, if you are an artist and you want to host an art gallery or an art show in there, then we can, you can bring that idea to me, and we'll discuss the price, we'll discuss, we have, all of our policies and procedures are just now up on the web, as of a couple weeks ago, but they're there under the about thing, under the about tab, and we're looking for the, for the, for the community to bring ideas to us, and then we work with them. Yep, and that's events and promotion. Looking ahead, which is the next slide. Our second annual golf outing is tomorrow. We have 12 teams signed up so far, which is pretty reasonable, considering, you know, it was, it's our second one, and it's the middle of the year, and we're just starting to get going on this. We are also celebrating Oktoberfest's 20th anniversary this year, so stay tuned for some more surprises and things that are, that we're going to be bringing to the event this year. It'll be a little bit different. Trunk or Treat is coming back. We're adding new events in the fall. Celine After Dark, which is a Halloween event geared more towards teens and adults, and will, I'm working with, I'm really hoping that this comes through, but I'm working with one of the theater teachers, and she wants to work with her students to put a haunted house in the 109. I think that would be outstanding. That would just be one aspect of the evening, but that's something that I really want to have happen. We also want to add a holiday market as well, and a reason for people to really come down and support the businesses and local vendors on the weekend of, after Thanksgiving. So the murder mystery event will return to the 109 this November. Coco Crawl will return, and later this year, or later this week, it says we will begin the community mural, but we will, I will begin calling for art for that, so. That's it. Thank you. Any questions about what we do, or anything that you, anything on the contracts?
Well, let me start again to my extreme left and work my way back to Councilmembers Girbaugh and Rice. Councilmember Harmout, any comments or questions for Director Detling?
I'm so excited about the data, that's all I have to say. I do have a couple questions, though. Okay, so, great tool, I just would like to dig more into what type of tool that was, and, you know, like how, you know, accurate it is, but does it track time a day as well?
It does. It said that the busiest times of days here is dinnertime.
Okay.
And Fridays and Saturdays are the busiest days, and August is the busiest month.
Okay, and so we're going to kind of be gauging this year over year to see how these numbers are changing? Is that kind of part of the idea?
I can't promise that. So we don't have, what we have right now is, literally, I have a list of dates and the number of visitors we have. That's what I got for the 2024 data. So from the 2023 data, it shows, like, they actually created that into like a really nice report for us, but that's not something that I think that they'll continue to do.
Okay. So that kind of leads into how are we, like, what kind of key indicators are you looking at or tracking to gauge success for the effort and the expenditures moving forward? You know, clearly, this is good metrics to say, oh, we did this, and it drove X amount of extra traffic. So that, that was kind of one of the points I wanted to make. I like that. I wish we could improve that and see how it improves year over year with, with events over events. And then the other thing I want to ask about the graphic that's going to be in Leather Bucket Alley, who is going to review and approve the concept?
That is a very good question. So when I first started working on this, I had worked with an artist, and he came up with an idea, but with advice from Acting, Acting City Manager Cole, it didn't feel like it was the right thing to do. So I'm going to do a call for art. I'd be happy to bring it back here at the next council meeting, or review it individually, however that is suggested.
I think that there should be maybe some involvement, either from the community or from city council, to look at what the concepts we're thinking, that we're going to be putting out to the community, you know, for permanent, for insulin. I think there should be a couple folks weighing in on that.
Director Detling, if you're able to turn that around in two weeks' time to provide council something to review and digest, we will, we will certainly accommodate you on our August 3rd council agenda.
Other than that, I like the fact that you're talking about materials, and the where, and the liability, and good, good things to be thinking about.
Councilmember Lesch?
Well, as a downtown resident, I am obviously very appreciative of everything that you do down there, and as the Arts and Culture Liaison, I'm, I'm happy to see that you're taking the ball and running with it, since we kind of dropped it along the way, but, you know, I am a big fan of Main Street, so.
I wouldn't say that you dropped the ball, I would just say that the committee thought there were other, other potential priorities, that's all.
Yeah, you know, Leather Bucket Alley has always been kind of a...
You pass the ball to somebody else who can move it forward down the court.
The quarterback.
It's good.
Councilmember Rucio?
I just want to say, I think Celine...
I just want to say, I think Celine Main Street's been a definite boon to the community. Thank you very much for opening 109's doors for our farewell dinner for our Celine Lindenberg group when they were here. We accommodated 60 some people at a sit-down dinner, a buffet line, a bar, and a DJ. And although it was a little warm in there that night because of the number of people, it was a wonderful accommodation for us. And thank you very much for all you do for the community.
You're welcome. And I'm glad that you had such an enjoyable night that night.
Mayor Pretim Dillon.
Thank you. I want to say thank you for the data, like the numbers, because I remember when you and I, Mr. Seo, were at SEMCOG. And that was a big thing that they talked about was kind of knowing your numbers and knowing and you guys really embraced it. And you said, we're going to figure out what's working and where to put our efforts. And it really, it definitely looks like that's what's being done. So thank you for for really following through on that. It's amazing when you start seeing the numbers, because, you know, people say, oh, you have a quiet little sleepy town. We don't have any foot traffic. We don't have this. When you see the numbers, I mean, it is showing that what you're doing is working. And, you know, we there's there's always going to be some improvement to do upon ourselves. But we're definitely in the right direction. So thank you very much for that. I'm very excited about the mural. I mean, that was an idea. And again, it was something, it's just a concept that I brought. And that was I had seen from another community and thought, wow, we have a perfect place to do something like this. And so realizing that it's going to be realized is is awesome. So thank you again for that. And then I want to touch on the 109. Because for a long time, I felt like it didn't quite find its purpose. And part of it was the occupancy restrictions and some modifications that you were required to make. But I feel like it's sort of finding its groove. And it's very much a community asset. And I think we're going to start to see it being utilized in that way. So I'm very excited that you're asking for input as to what people want to see in it, not just waiting for people to come to you. Because I really do think that it's 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 a phenomenal venue. And once people start to realize the potential of it, Ms. Rice has some awesome pictures that I think that once people see what can happen in that space, it will definitely be utilized. So thank you again very much for everything you're doing. And we look forward to you guys always reporting back. And I know you're hitting your busy season.
We are, yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Gearbaugh?
Again, this work wouldn't get done without your group and the volunteers that are part of it. The activities and things are just not something a city can champion as much as you are and the board and those members. I just want to say thank you. What I see going forward is that you continue to do the things that connect the community, make the downtown vital, and make it recognizable. So we'll continue that way. What I one of the things I was wondering about, as you mentioned, the mural and so forth, I hope it stays conceptual and so forth, not so much of us trying to create it, because the more cooks you put in that kitchen, the less it's going to happen and whatever. So for us, it's just, I think, an idea that you carry and run with. And hopefully, that'll be the thing that because we've had discussions about what was kind of suggested in the past. And I think those are great ideas, and hopefully, those come to fruition. Because we know what happened when we were designing downtown Celine, and that took about three months to get everybody to do it, create the stuff. So I don't want to see that happen for you. So hopefully, we'll hold back on our stuff. As it goes for the banners and those type of things and all of that, is there a long waitlist? I'm just curious that those type of things?
There's not. So I think there's every year when people see the banners go up, they're like, oh, how can I do that for my family member? How can I even do that for myself? Or how can I do that for for somebody I love? And so then we get questions. And we have a wonderful volunteer who's in charge of that, Gretchen Waters. She organizes that list, and every year, we send it out to the people. And so far, we haven't had like too many banners for for the list. So this year, you may have seen some banners in windows nearby. That was simply because the brackets didn't come in on time. So so we had we had we had expected them to be coming in. And then they were like, oh, no, it's they're not coming in for like six, you know, I think it was six weeks from when we checked on them. So it wasn't even like
I think it's a great program and want to make sure that there isn't anybody that can't have their banner hung because we don't have enough posts or something uptown that we could start looking for other areas in terms of expanding. So
So far, there's a good balance. If that were to change, I think that hanging them in windows is a very good opportunity, at least at least short term.
And when you were talking about events and things at the 109, one of the ideas that we was thinking, as we all met with Jeff Erwin up at Carrigan, so that's a great coffee shop, it was very loud and everything, potentially using that facility for state and elected officials, namely our federal and our state ones that come to the community would like to be in an area in which there's not so much controversy at City Hall or something like that, which would be beneficial and would be quiet. So I know there can be issues with it and everything. But I think that would be a great opportunity to have people come downtown to actually meet their state representatives and so forth. So we kind of suggested that so in the future.
We're going to look into that. In the past week or so, some questions have been coming up as to whether or not we should host any political activities in that building. And our immediate response was, okay, not for now. For the for the for the time being, we are not going to host any political activities in there. But what I think, because it is a community center, I think it should, we should go the opposite way. And we're going to talk about this at a board meeting. So and I can, you know, we'll make a decision as a board on that. But I think it should go the opposite way. I think we should be open for all political and community activities regardless, you know, and are and available to be rented without question as to what
And I mean, part of that separates how we provide funding for you, too, and everything. So kind of clarifying that that there could be some title issues that we need to make sure that we follow, too. So
Absolutely.
But thanks for considering that. And if it's too controversial, I understand. And we don't, that's not the purpose and intention of it. But it would make a great opportunity to have that kind of support.
For your board's benefit, to Mr. Gearbaugh's point, Director Delling, I think there's an important distinction to be to be made between political, so campaigning for office or causes, and an actual elected official using it not to talk about their political campaigns or aspirations, but to talk about their work they're doing in their capacity as an elected or appointed official. So I dealt with these types of issues when I was in the legislature. And that's usually the distinction that that entities make, is we will host you as an elected official, speaking in an official capacity, not talking about politics or a political campaign. Just something to consider.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Rice?
One quick question. Do you do you take some of this data and kind of share it with business owners? And then do they have any data that they can share back with you about, oh, yeah, my restaurant saw this increase during this weekend, or things like that? Do you guys have those types of conversations?
We do have those types of conversations. Like you had put it, though, it is mostly anecdotal. Most businesses aren't interested in saying, yes, we or even have the capacity at any given time, you know, like a week later to say, yes, our sales increases by XYZ, you know, percentage compared to other days. But the anecdotal data, knowing that, for example, the Coco Crawl is, you know, is some of the is like the busiest day and the most income for some of our businesses, as well as knowing that Oktoberfest is exactly the opposite. But it's still a fundraiser, and it's still a signature event for the community. So keeping something like that maybe minimal, and then doing more like the Coco Crawl or something similar. You know, this year, we introduced the XO XO Extravaganza along with Ladies Night Out. And it's very similar, but it happened in February. It was it was a slow turnout for this particular one, but it was also last minute planning, and it was really bad weather. And, you know, but coming up with ideas like that, a reason to get people into the businesses and to kind of compete and celebrate in that fun way for for prizes is is a really has been really beneficial for the community and for the businesses.
Good. And I love that. I mean, we have strong business owners who are coming up with ideas, like Lindsay's here from the bookstore. And I think that that's wonderful that you all can work together and and create those things that get foot feet in businesses, but also knowing that sometimes community events can actually detract from that. I used to be on the Summer Fest board, and I know that the bars would shut down early because who wants someone drunk from Summer Fest to go into your bar and cause a scene? So I love that you guys are having those conversations. I think that's great. I will say that for you having only been here two years, you know, even as a community member, but my I'm in my second term on council, this, these are the best numbers, and not just like the most numbers we've seen, but like these vibrancy grants, these things you're getting from M E D C, like all like bringing in that to our business owners and to our community is amazing. And we just, we have not had that until you sat in that seat. And so I can't thank you enough for those types of things. I know that those things, I sat with you, I think, one day at Carrigan while you were trying to fill out one of those grants. And I know that those things take so much time. So can't thank you enough for bringing that type of of monies into our community so that folks can do things like signage and things like all those things that business owners like, it's an extra expense, right? So like, to get those types of things into their business is so helpful. The last thing that I will say is I think that you all are doing just such an amazing job, coming up with events that are kind of spanning age groups, demographics, things like that in the community. I attended almost every one of these events on this list here. A couple of things stood out for me in particular. One was the murder mystery crawl. A couple who the husband was here in town from Ohio, working, was working in Ann Arbor. They Googled things to do and found that murder mystery crawl. So please take note that social media and web presence is key to like getting, you know, getting people into town. I think that's amazing. And then my sisters-in-law were in town for the comedy show and could not believe that we had that, you know, two blocks away from our house. So just had such a good time that night. They were just in town this past Friday for an event that I held at the 109. So I will promote the heck out of the fact that the 109 is an awesome place to host an event. I had 40 people at my event who could not say enough, half of which were my neighbors. So local community members who were like, oh, my gosh, this place looks amazing. I didn't know you could host events here. So promote, 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 anything that you can do to get more people active with social media. And maybe there's a way that you can work with either metric marketing, or the city, or somebody to keep those interns or keep a social media person on staff, something like that. Because I think that those kinds of things, you know, we can spread word of mouth. But I think those kinds of things are going to get more people to want to come into Celine for actual, you know, purposes, become a destination than just the pass-through of Celine. So you're doing a great job. The turnaround over the last two years has been amazing. And I can't wait to see what's next. You're welcome.
Mr. Delling, I don't have much to add. I think my colleagues did a did a fantastic job of providing some feedback, but also some some commentary on the excellent work you and your colleagues are doing. It's a very solid report. I guess I would end with this. This is kind of fun. And I'm going to test the memory of some of my colleagues and friends who've been in this community for a number of years, Mr. Gearbaugh, Mr. Seo, Tracy Merian. I think the haunted house downtown is a phenomenal idea. And it's derived from a memory. There was a haunted house downtown after Wright's Cleaners closed before Pineapple House opened, probably circa 1989 to 1990. And it was organized by the Celine optimists. And I went, and I vividly remember going, and I vividly remember having a wonderful time, even though in retrospect, I'm a bit embarrassed because I think I dressed up as President Nixon. But but it was it was I can vividly recall attending as a kindergartner, you know, more than 30 years ago now. So I think that's I think that's a wonderful addition to the social calendar. I think that the point is that you're doing, you know, phenomenal work, and we want you to keep it up. And we want to be a partner and extend a hand of cooperation and support whenever you need it. So thank you for all you do for the community. Appreciate your patience this evening. Ladies, thank you for being here as well. We are going to proceed with the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, with the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for discussion.
I'd like to remove bills, reverse osmosis, which is 2519, excuse me, and Thai Michigan T O, which is 25120.
And have you indicated questions or concerns to the chair or the acting city manager?
Yes.
Okay. It's been moved by Dillon to approve the consent agenda as amended, noting three subtractions that'll appear under new businesses. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gearbaugh. Is there any additional discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. I say having the motion carries unanimously. First up is bills. There's a motion to approve bills consisting of 83 payees and the amount of $612,129.97.
I'll move to approve.
Moved by Dillon to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rice. The floor is yours, Mayor Pretim Dillon.
Thank you. I just, in going through this, there were two things that I wanted to break, make notice of, is that I think in its pardon the pun, there's just a lot of poo here. The city's spending a tremendous amount of money on dog waste bags. I don't know that that necessarily, we're spending over $4,000. And this is this is more than once a year. And so I think that we've got to kind of look at something with this. I think don't dog owners, as a dog owner, I feel like I have a I have a responsibility to clean up after my own dog, to provide my own dog bags. When we look at kind of cutting costs, I think this is something that we need to look at. And while it is a nice thing to offer in our parks, it comes at a cost, at a hefty cost. So I would like that reviewed at some point. The other question that I had was that there was a payment to Fleas and Vanderbrink for some services regarding the retaining wall. I think it was a $15,000 charge. And this is for the retaining wall at on Monroe Street for the cemetery. I didn't remember was that 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 came back. All of a sudden, it seems like it's been revived, and it's now kind of jumped back into being a priority of this wall. And just sort of understanding, have we budgeted for this? And at what point are we going to start seeing proposals that they're doing more work right now?
So currently, right now, the amount that we did spend was to assess how much time we had before we really needed to repair out at the cemetery. And then what we're moving forward with is getting an idea of the specifications of what we're going to need to do to replace it, so that we can come up with a good cost to plan for that expense, at which time that will be brought in front of council along the way as well, so that we can kind of decide which direction we want to be going in. And I know there's been a lot of discussion around how we fund that repair. So the dollar amount will be known, the timeframe will be known, and then we can talk about how we're going to fund it.
Councilmember Seo, as the chair of the Cemetery Committee, I believe you mentioned this maybe two or three meetings back. Do you care to make any additional comments per the question articulated by Mayor Pretim Dillon?
Yes, sure. Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Cabage from Fleas Vanderbrink said that he thought because it had been almost two years since they had done the initial engineering work on it, that they needed to spend some time and money to refresh what they had done. So let me bring it forward again this fall, that it's up to date.
Thank you very much.
There's no questions, Mr. Gearbaugh?
Just clarification on that. It seems like we've just gone towards replacing the wall or putting a wall in front of it. Is there any assumption just to say to repair the wall?
They're looking at all models right now. One's best for long-term repair, just like Dr. Hopple. I talked about the roads are the right fix at the right time. I think he's trying to have a safe methodology with this routine wall.
Thank you. Councilmember Rice, please.
I'm just questioning the dog waste bags things. And I'm wondering if that also includes the Parks Commission has recommended that we put two new stations out each year. And I'm not sure if that's maybe included in there, that's why it's so high, or if that's just bags. Just bags, okay.
Mr. Gearbaugh, before we vote?
Yeah, I kind of concur with that expense. Do we know what it is annually? Because it sounds like
We don't know the amount specifically annually.
I mean, if it was only 4,000 for a year, maybe. But if it's like 10, 12, $20,000 a year, that's part of a position. And that shouldn't be something we should be doing.
We can come up with an annualized expense for you on
Maybe communicate that via the Parks and Rec portion of your upcoming communicate, either this week or next. There's no additional discussion. There's a motion on the floor to approve the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. I say having the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item, 25-119 reverse osmosis membrane purchase, R O number two. This will be a motion to approve the purchase and installation of reverse osmosis membranes from Process Solutions Incorporated and not to exceed amount of 1,008,000.
Move a clarification. We don't know whether this is to purchase and install, or is it just a purchase? And I think that's Ms. Dillon
That was my question, was the motion indicates installation, but the
It's my understanding that this includes purchase and installation.
So the wording is correct.
It is different, and I will certainly communicate that.
Because the proposal does not mention anything about installation. It shows just a quantity, a dollar amount, and then a total.
I will double check with Dr. Hopple. But it was my understanding that the implementation was included.
So is there a motion then to approve the purchase and installation?
Um.
I got to have a motion to continue, folks. I'm not trying
I move to to approve the purchase and installation.
I move to approve the purchase and installation.
Okay, moved by Rice. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lesh. Any additional discussion? Mayor Potem Dillon.
So long as it is, it does say not to exceed 108. So if there is an installation fee, it would come back to us, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any additional discussion? Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded by Rice and Lesh to approve the purchase and installation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. I say having the motion carries unanimously. Move on to new business item, 25-120, Thai Michigan teal. This will be a motion to approve the Thai Michigan teal request.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Gierbaugh to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by CEO. Questions? Go ahead, Mayor Potem Dillon. I'll jump to you, Councilmember Harmon.
Thank you. My question was just a little bit of clarification. These comes to us as form letters, and they ask for permission to tie ribbons throughout our community. So what I would like to do is just establish that when we are acknowledging these and approving them, that we provide guidelines of, okay, it's within a certain range, what the date for installation and removal is, so that it's very clear from all standpoints as to what it is. We've been very fortunate with, with the teal organization, that they have been very mindful, and they generally do our downtown. But this is now opening this up for other organizations to come forward, and I think just having a procedure that clarifies what we allow is in the best interest.
Clerk Rowland, do you want to comment on that?
I did speak with the lady who sent the memo, but the problem is, is that the people who go out and put the teal ribbons on and take them down are volunteers, and they're done as they have the opportunity. So there's no easy way of saying it needs to be done by this day and removed by that day. I mean, we can obviously put those parameters on there, but I'm not sure how we, if we, if they don't do it, do we not accept it next year? I don't know how to make sure that they understand that we are very serious about having these parameters.
Councilmember Harmon.
I second that comment about having a criteria, I think a standard for what we expect, and you know, guidance would be probably helpful. I also wanted to make a comment, if that's okay. September is recognized as National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month, and it's critical time for us to unite in the fight against this disease. Ovarian cancer is a sign, is a significant health concern. That's increased awareness is vital for early diagnosis and detection and improved outcome. So there's a couple main points. Again, raising awareness via Thai Michigan teal type of initiatives, promoting early detection, understanding the risks and what's available for testing is really important, and it ties into our healthcare task force initiatives, advocacy for better care, supporting research and the further need for funding and what we can do to help support that. And again, building a community for support. And so that's just what I wanted to make the comment on.
Very good. We appreciate that. Acting City Manager Cole, per the comments made by Mayor Potem Dillon and Councilmember Harmon, perhaps working with the clerk's office and department heads, this could be, this topic could be broached at a department head meeting to see how best this issue could be handled, how reasonable, common sense parameters could be inserted into policy and how potentially they could be enforced. I do want to preface, we're talking about ribbons on utility poles, so I don't want to spend a great deal of time on this, but I think a focused conversation at one of your upcoming meetings would be beneficial.
Yes, so the Gmail will report back to you.
Good.
We'll communicate.
Councilmember Gierbaugh?
I was just saying, I accept a friendly amendment to add that to that, to create some kind of timeline, if someone wants to propose it. Because one of the things is we've noticed, even with U.S. flags and some of the stuff uptown, it seems like it's up there for a long time, and as they start to deteriorate or look bad, we need to have some mechanism in which to request the organization or whoever to address that concern.
Well, unless there's objections, why don't you proceed, and maybe you can bring something back at either our next meeting or the subsequent meeting. Okay, thank you. So motion on the floor moved by Gierbaugh, seconded by CEO to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. I say having the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the regular portion of our new business agenda, which is agenda item 25-121, fire service plan and outcome deadlines. This will be a motion to acknowledge, recede, and to approve or not to approve establishing of a fire service plan forward and outcome deadlines.
Move to acknowledge.
Second.
Okay, moved by Dylan simply to acknowledge and seconded by Gierbaugh. Acting City Manager Cole, the recommendation is pretty straightforward. Do you want to provide some brief obligatory comments for the public record?
Absolutely. So over the past year, we've done some heavy lifting. We've commissioned a study. We've vetted our cancer in other communities. We've analyzed regional trends, and we've come up with a robust model to compare the future of our fire governance. Our goal is to deliver responsive, equitable, and financially sound fire protection. So what we're now proposing is that we take a step back, that we've collected the data and the information, and taking a little bit of time to look at how we're going to evaluate and consider the information that was part of the study and the information that we've learned while we've been doing this investigative phase with the fire department. We've selected to look at response time, governance, clarity and transparency, fiscal sustainability, cost sharing equity, intergovernmental collaboration, ease of transition, operational excellence, community impact and visibility, capital planning and asset control. And we're asking that we come back to you by August 31st with these criteria weighted and measured, for you to consider the options.
Very good. There are questions for the acting city manager. I'll start with Councilmember Rice.
I think August 31st is too close of a time period. I would like to give this at least 90 days, especially with an incoming city manager. So I'm, I'm saying at least 90 days for this committee.
So what I would suggest, Councilmember Rice, if that's your prerogative, when we get to the subsequent motion to approve or not to approve, I would amend that, and then just work from, work 90 days out from today. So that essentially puts us in the end of October.
Perfect.
Okay. Councilmember Gierbaugh?
I guess my question on this one is, you know, we proposed all of this. Is it our intent not to include any of the Celine Air Fire Board in looking at this?
I think our intent right now is to form a small group with our representatives here from the city to deliberate on the data that we've now been handed to us in the report, and to put that data together in a format that all in council can consider when making a decision. Now, this is a multi-step process, it's something that I would imagine. I don't think that we're going to come back in first class and know what direction exactly we're going to be headed. However, I would urge council to consider the timing of this, just because SAFD and Councilmember Lesh may be able to speak, Lesh may be able to speak to this a little bit better. They're, they're kind of hitting a little bit of a pause button right now, waiting for the city to make some decisions. And so while there's not great urgency on our part to decide right in this moment, I think that there, there is a little bit of urgency on their part. So Councilmember Lesh, I don't know if you have any to-
I would concur with our acting city manager that the, the other municipalities have made it quite clear that they are more interested in the city's stance on the whole report and our ability to, our ability and/or desire to go in any particular direction. So I think the sooner we could do it would be better, but the other municipalities seem to be complacent in the fact that they are waiting for us to have some work.
I mean, that's kind of been my concern, is that I think the Fire Board just look at us as, we don't know what the hell we're doing. And that's my concern with is that at least two of those options require, from my perspective, input from the Fire Board because of those concerns. So having that happen, I just feel like this is another example of something that we keep pushing down the road. And the sooner that we get this resolved, and I understand we're going to have a new city manager, so that does take into consideration. I just, I just don't know where this is happening, and the more we keep holding out from the Celine Air Fire Department, the more they start looking at us as, what are you guys doing, and are we going to part of it? So whatever we do on this thing moving forward, I'm very concerned that we've just created another even more complex outcome. And it's like, yeah, well, we don't care about you guys. And so that's my bigger issue of how do we do this? And I know we have our representative that's been working on the steering committee, and there's a number of individuals that we've been moving forward, and they have been moving forward on things. And so this feedback loop of whatever, it's like, I feel like everybody needs to be involved in this, and I'm just not sure how that's going to happen. But if you can assure me that you're part of this, or how this is going to play out, I, that's my concern.
And if I may, I don't, the acting city manager can correct me if I'm wrong. The way that this is written, it doesn't mitigate or prevent you or your colleagues on the working group from engaging other members of the Fire Board or Fire Department if you need particular insight or you'd like them to contribute to discussions.
No, and at times that will be required.
Yeah. And to the point that Mr. Gierbaugh made, and to Councilmember Rice, I think we do want to be thoughtful, but we also want to move expeditiously. We also need to be mindful. We have a new city manager coming on board. So when we get to the subsequent motion, I guess I would want to split the difference with you. I concede a 30-day time round, 30-day timeframe is a bit too tight. I would go 60 days. And I think that Council Member Lash, Ms. Champion, Ms. Cole, and anybody else who's called upon to assist should try to make this a priority, and I'm sure you will. And I fully, I am confident that you would be able to complete the work and submit a recommendation to council within 60 days. Let me jump to Mayor Potem Dillon real quick, Councilmember Rice, and then I'll jump back to you.
Thank you. Yes, I will say that I, I do feel though, 60-day compromise could be good. 30 days may be a little tight to get the, the information kind of assembled, but we do have an obligation to the Fire Department. And 90 days, and I will say that when the recommendation is 60 days, on day 61, this body needs to meet and make a definitive decision. It's, we cannot delay anymore. We have asked the Fire Department to roll back their budgeting timeframe, and until we can say, you know, we in, out, or adjacent to the pool, we've got to be able to, so that adequate, they can adequately plan. And we can be a part of it to plan our part of it. I think it's in the best interest of everyone if we just make a decision and figure out what it's going to be. And so I would agree to 60 days versus 30 days with an absolute that a decision has to be made at that point.
Councilmember Rice?
Yeah, so how about this? So I agree, 60 days sounds fine, that a recommendation will come to this body, but perhaps with a 30-day extension where if, if this full body feels like, you know, the rest of the board needed to be involved or something along those lines, that our decision isn't going to be made at that meeting, that we're presented that recommendation, that we maybe then have an additional two weeks to 30 days to tie up all the loose ends if we have additional questions.
My recommend-
We don't want to rush into a hasty decision simply because a recommendation has been made and then-
Right. My recommendation to alleviate the concerns that I'm hearing would be to just set it to a date certain of September the 15th, and the clerk can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe that's the second council meeting in September. Is that correct? And then at that time, council has the discretion. It will receive a report, have a formal presentation, a debate and discussion. If you're prepared to develop consensus, the body can do that. If they'd like to defer to a subsequent meeting, they're certainly free to do that as well.
That seems, September 15th is-
You're shy of 60 days.
Yeah, okay. That seems reasonable.
Okay. Before we vote on the motion to acknowledge, State, Mayor Potem Dillon.
Thank you. So kind of piggybacking on Councilmember Rice's thing, would then, if you're looking at a timeframe, I'm going to throw out just a different set of numbers, would a 45-day window with a 60-day, you know, definitive? I just don't want to keep kicking this out because it is going to directly impact the Fire Department in their budgeting.
If the folks on the committee think that they can get that portion of it done in 45 days.
Let's, we still have a motion to acknowledge on the floor. Let me deal with that, and then we can deal with the debate on the duration. Is there any questions regarding the memorandum and support materials that's been provided by staff and by my office before we vote? Mr. Gierbaugh?
Just real quick, looking at the mayor's memo, all of that structure and the assessment points and all of that was developed by you, Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
She wrote about 95% of the memo.
Okay, great. Just clarifying where that all came from. Thank you.
I think I added the last paragraph and changed like five words, so. Go ahead, before we vote.
Yes. So just quickly, when we look at the matrix and the points and the weights, did the consultant add any, have any input into that? So where we should be focusing our efforts and weighting the most, because there's a lot of tens.
Yeah, so he helped me kind of, you know, build out the most important things that the city should consider for your approval and consideration.
Okay, I'm going to call for a vote on acknowledging received the memo. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. I say having the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to approve, not to approve, or would an individual care to offer a modified motion that's acceptable to the chair?
I think to offer a modified motion to extend to a date certain of September 15th.
Okay, so to be, correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Rice, it would be a motion to approve, noting that the new deadline would be September the 15th, and on that September the 15th date, a formal report and recommendation needs to be submitted to council.
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Yeah.
Seconded by Harmon. Discussion. Mayor Potem Dillon.
Just to clarify, again, making sure that are we going to be voting and making a definitive decision?
That's a decision for council at that time.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is I want to make sure that we have a window of time that if people, I don't want to get information and say, oh, we need more information, and then it's going to kick it out even further.
The memo states, I apologize, the memo states that the recommendation would be due August 31st, so this would be changing that recommendation due to September 15th.
Right. But that's not a decision.
Again, I don't know that this body can commit to a decision on that occasion. The body, the majority is free to make a decision or cast any vote that's appropriately worded on the 15th. Also, if the majority would like to postpone or defer, they're welcome to do that as well. Let me jump to Mr. Gierbaugh first, and then I'll jump to you, Councilmember Harmon.
I just want to clarify in there that we should have a date for which the report is done, so that we have it at least a week prior to the, and I think you had that kind of worded in here.
Well, it actually, our protocols would supersede that. So if it's going to be on the September 15th agenda, it actually has to be ready by that Wednesday before. So it will be submitted to council on the 10th.
Okay, because it says, present findings, compare scores, and recommend course of action to council no later than August 31st, 2025. So we probably should make that date September-
I thought that's what we're making, the 15th.
Well, the 15th is the meeting, so we need to have that report.
I think our protocols sort of supersede, because our protocols require, unless it's an emergency, unless it requires emergency action, that all support materials be submitted as part of an agenda item by that Wednesday before.
So then-
I feel that we're good. Do you concur with that? Okay.
Okay. We've had problems before where it comes in on a Friday, so I just want to make sure that we don't have that. Thank you.
Yep. Councilmember Harmon?
That was exactly my point.
Oh, easy enough. Any additional debate on the motion? No? Okay, we have a motion on the floor then. I believe this was moved by, was it moved by Rice and seconded by Harmon?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. I say having the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 25-122, Rec Center Task Force. This will be a motion to acknowledge received, and to approve or not to approve the Rec Center Task Force recommendation.
Move to acknowledge.
Moved by Dylan simply to acknowledge. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gierbaugh. Acting City Manager Cole. Mr. Gierbaugh touched on some of these items at the last meeting, so will not come as a surprise to anybody on the, the desk or those watching at home. Excuse me.
Yes, you're good. Thank you so much. I want to talk to you a little bit about the Rec Center Task Force. They are working so hard, and we are making so much progress on delving into the inner workings of the Rec Center. And Sunshine, excuse me, Director Lambert has been phenomenal in providing this data. Right now, we're in the process of getting the report back from Plant Moran, which has slowed our progress a little bit because we need the data and the financial modeling and recommendations before we can move forward. Additionally, this is a pivotal decision for the city of Celine, and one that we do have a little bit of breadth of time on. My recommendation is that we, we push out our deadline because of the Plant Moran study that we're waiting on right now. We're waiting on working groups to finish up some of the excellent, and I mean excellent work they are doing. So that, I'm asking, and a little bit of time for our new city manager to come on board and get familiar with the Celine Rec Center and have hit his fingerprints on this as well. We're formally recommending that the task force new deadline would be Halloween, October 31st. So maybe after we, we see this, we can go over and go to the haunted house.
Very good. Before I defer to Councilmembers Gierbaugh, Rice, who serve on the Rec Center Task Force, I want to add, as a member of, as an ex officio and a member of one of the working groups, Acting City Manager Cole is correct, some of the working groups have done and completed some excellent work. There are other subcommittees that are not nearly as far along, and I'm on one of those, where we've had some really wonderful discussions. We've reviewed some excellent analysis, but we're probably 30% through our work, even though we're meeting weekly. So we will need some additional time to report out and to share that with the, with the larger committees so that our recommendations and thoughts can be incorporated into the, the final report which is submitted to council. Mr. Gierbaugh, anything you'd like to add as a member of the task force?
While we're postponing this, I'm waiting for the Plant Moran. I am disappointed that we couldn't have an answer back. Again, as we look at even our preliminary reports of the financial position of the Rec Center, it's still taking at least the $400,000 this year. year, if not more, because we haven't taken into consideration all the repairs and everything else. As we were just talking about the village related to the road, these are the funds that have been substituted to support this Rec Center at the disadvantage to the community on every other activity. We're continuing this, just like the fire report, pushing things down the road. I don't know when this is going to be resolved, but my biggest concern is that we are not solving the problem. And one of the things, when I look at the financial reports, one of my challenges would be to actually support for the community is that the Rec Center look at reducing some of its expenses. Now, you do not operate an operation or a business without addressing your recurring costs and looking at what savings can be done to prevent continued loss and use of our fund balance. So at this point, I don't see this reducing itself. And in fact, when I look at some of the numbers, the budget was so far off from what was presented, I don't know how those numbers were actually developed. And I haven't looked to compare what that was to our current budget this year, but I'm hoping those were corrected so that we have realistic numbers. So, thank you.
Councilmember Rice?
Yeah, I concur that this needs more time and due diligence. You know, we approved a budget for the Rec Center for this upcoming year with the understanding that we would work really hard to solve some problems. I don't, I don't think that, you know, rushing this is necessarily going to help, but I also, I also agree that this needs to be done, you know, before fiscal year '27 planning. That's correct, correct? Yeah. So yeah, a couple more months, I think, would be very helpful to, you know, nail down some of these, some of these working groups. I know that the working group that I'm in is sort of more, we don't have, you know, necessarily a tangible objective that, you know, is necessarily going to save the Rec Center. So I'm a little biased when I say, you know, the other groups should have more time, but I agree that folks need more time.
No questions from the dais? Mayor Pretem Dillon?
Thank you. I do have a concern, because this group has now been meeting for six months. You're asking for another three months. And then by the time we make a decision, that'll probably be months past that. So we're, it's a year of kicking that can again. And at some point, we have to stop the hemorrhaging. And I, you know, what Mr. Gierba said rings true, that we have got to look at ways to cut costs immediately and outside of what's going to happen here. I would also like to understand the scope of what Plant Moran study is going to be providing to us, what information, and is there a direct recommendation coming from this? Because what I don't want to do is get a study that has a bunch of numbers that doesn't tell us what to do with it, and then it's going to go back to a committee and churn for another six months. So I'd like to really have an understanding of what is going on here. We just can't keep continuing this way. We looked at the year-end numbers for the Rec Center, and it was grossly disappointing. They fell short on memberships, they fell short on revenue, and then again, their liabilities just skyrocketed. We just authorized $1 million for the Dectron unit without having a means of paying for it except through fund balance. This is not sustainable. We have got to find something to do, and just prolonging it is not going to solve the problem.
If I may, nobody's dragging their feet or attempting to prolong anything. We want to come to a conclusion and develop a recommendation as soon as possible, but it takes time to do the analysis, to engage the appropriate stakeholders, and to review the competing proposals. So I want to tell you, because I've been a part of this group, that people are moving as expeditiously as possible, and we're aiming to get you a report just as soon as we can. There's unfortunately just some moving pieces that I don't think can be rectified or resolved at this point, which requires some additional time. But nobody's dragging their feet, nobody's kicking their can down the road. We, everybody at this dais and all the community stakeholders in this community and city want to solve this problem and have a corrective action plan established and approved just as soon as possible. But we've got to be a little bit more patient and understand that some time and grace needs to be extended to this group to give you the analysis that you will want and need to make an informed decision.
And, but that's the issue, Mayor. It's, at what point is it enough time? We've given six months already.
Yeah, it has not been six months.
Okay, because this says over the past six months, the Rec Center Task Force.
The Task Force was established three months ago, as you recall. That was an affirmative vote by council, so it's not six.
I'm reading the memo.
Okay, but I'm telling you, it's not six months. So you can read the memo, but it's not six months. It's been three months since the group was established. Okay? Additional questions? No? Okay. We have a motion on the floor to acknowledge. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to approve or not to approve?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
One second.
Moved by Rice, seconded by Lash. Is there any additional discussion? Mr. Gierba?
The only reason I'm supporting this is because we need this Plant Moran study. It's the thing that will tell us. I mean, my biggest concerns is that there have been a lot of discussions from what we were doing. There's a lot of things that have to be done to this Rec Center, and it's clear, we need a whole lot of stuff to happen. Again, my biggest disappointment was, we could have done something to put it on the ballot, but we dragged our feet for over a year and a half, or even longer than that. And we can't continue this, Rob. So I will support this, but I'm very concerned that we're going to just have another delay. So at this point, we've got to fix it.
Well, I don't disagree with any of that. What I would add, though, is you can't put something on the ballot until we have an analysis and a plan. And I think there's probably an opportunity to put something on the ballot in the next 12 months, and I think I'm likely to support that if it's appropriately vetted and if the plan of action will rectify and resolve some of the issues that we've addressed in recent months, and actually maybe even improve the operations in the ensuing years. So I think this is a very reasonable, common-sense proposal to give a little bit of grace and extra time to a committee and a group of really dedicated individuals who are working hard to develop a plan that will improve the viability of the Rec Center for years to come. So I will be casting a strong and emphatic vote in favor of the motion. Any additional discussion? Councilmember Rice?
I will also be casting a vote in the affirmative. I want to remind folks that the Rec Center is a service, excuse me, to our community. Yes, we cannot go into debt because of a recreation center, but it's a community asset. It's a service to our community. It's one of the reasons why people are choosing to live in Celine. We have that data. We have that, not only data that we've collected, but also anecdotal data. We've had people in our, in our meetings telling us that that's the reason that they come into Celine. From a business perspective, sure, we need to fix things, and that's what this group is working on. But I think when we sit up here and we talk so passionately in the negative about how the Rec Center is, you know, draining us, or whatever pejorative term you want to use, it looks negatively upon a fantastic community asset. It clouds a shadow over top of something that maybe someone was thinking about joining the Rec Center, and now they're listening to these conversations, and they're like, well, I'm not going to waste my money joining, because everybody's talking so negatively about the Rec Center. We have to remember that this is a community service. It's a valuable asset. And this group is working their butts off to try to figure out how to save this thing so that we can continue it to be an asset for this community. And I understand all of the worries and the concerns about the money. I get it. I don't think we should be draining funds from this either. But let's take a moment and take a breath and talk about how this Rec Center is so dang valuable that we're working our butts off to save it.
Go ahead, Councilmember Harmon.
So what I really hope comes out of the subcommittee for the Rec Center is that there's a really defined scope. I believe the scope is to look into financial viability and that we're looking at all of the criteria and weighting it, and we're coming with a non-bias outcome and recommendation for us to be able to vote on. And if it takes another three months, that sounds like it fits within our milestone deadline, and I don't have issues with that, because we'll still meet our milestone deadline. However, I really want to make sure that what we get, the folks that are not on the subcommittee, we have a real clear path of how it was determined, how it was weighted, how it was considered. And I would like to have a very thorough recommendation that is a, we're not a bunch of words. It's, everything is weighted and defined.
Thank you. Mayor Pretem Dillon?
Thank you. Acting City Manager, is there any way to accelerate the Plant Moran study?
I will do my best to reach out to them and see if there's any, you know, heat we can get on getting that report turned around any faster. Plant Moran, just like many other businesses right now, are buried a lot of work. So I know they've been pressing forward as fast as they can to get us this information, because we can't do a lot of our analysis without it. So I know they'll certainly appreciate the extra time, but in the meantime, I will reach out to Plant Moran and see what I can do to level the heat under.
I appreciate that. I think part of my concern is that we don't have, we've never been given the scope of what their work is going to be. And as Ms. Harmon just mentioned, is, the people that are not sitting on the committees have no idea what's happening within those committees. If it's just, you know, we're going to have, you know, you know, some sort of a fundraiser, or we're going to do this, or we're going to do that. I mean, are these viable conversations that are happening? So I'd like at least at this point then to have what has been done with the committee brought forward to this body in a document, so that we can understand where they are. Because I just want to understand, what are we waiting on from these committees right now?
I think right now, the biggest thing that we're waiting on is we need to receive the data from Plant Moran before we can do our final analysis. So every single different group is working on different parts of the project. Some are completed, some are not completed. I think probably the easiest way people want to see their progress would be to join us for a Rec Center Task Force meeting. That would eliminate extra work being kind of done, which would then kind of cock up our gears, keep us from moving as fast as we want to. But we can put together a little summary. I will also, in my weekly communication, forward you, you guys are going to get a big weekly communication this week, the scope for Plant Moran.
Thank you very much.
And maybe have Maggie in your office follow up. And I believe the entire group is going to meet again at the end of August. But I think any and all Rec Center Task Force meetings, if we can extend an invite to other council members, obviously, if a majority is present, we're going to need to post it as a, as an official meeting, but we will welcome any and all council members to attend, to observe the meetings if you so desire. Real quick, because I do want to vote on the motion unless we have anything new to add. Go ahead.
Let me respond. One of the concerns that have come from the members of the Task Force is having accurate data and information. We can't answer questions that have been proposed, as like, how much money have we spent on our parks, on our parks and everything in the rec? And everyone's confused as to where the money's coming from, and that there's a lot of education that we as a city have to provide to these individuals, because we're still continuing to get this idea that stuff is supported through this CARES milage, and it's not. And there's a lot of information related to, why are our numbers, why are they the way they are? Where is this information? So hopefully, Plant Moran, in their scope, is going to address some of those needs.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Harmon, before we vote?
I don't, could we get meeting minutes? Is this something that we could do coming out of our subcommittees? And I don't think it's really going to be something where everybody's going to be able to attend a subcommittee meeting that's not on the subcommittee.
No, I would not recommend, I mean, members of council are free to attend subcommittee meetings. I would recommend attending the larger group task force meetings where all the subcommittees report out.
I'm just saying, can we, is there a reason why we can't have meeting minutes?
I think, right now, the groups have been meeting as subgroups individually. Some of them have turned into their work entities, some have turned into their plan. We don't have formal minutes for each one of the little subcommittee meetings, because they are individual groups of the larger committee. The larger committee is set to reconvene with all of us present, all of the groups who will be present, and with their work product, kind of talking about some of their ideas. And I think that would be an phenomenal meeting for as many of you to attend as possible.
Could you send those dates to council?
Sure.
Thank you.
And when that group reconvenes, I think it's towards the end of August. For those council members who are not present, we can try to develop either recording or some, some basic minutes to provide you as a courtesy. We have a motion on the floor moved by Rice, seconded by Lash to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay.
Nay.
Eyes have it, the motion carries six to one. We move on to new business item 25-124, Celine Main Street Art in the Bucket, Art in the Bucket and Annual Renewal. Is that worded correctly?
Well, it's, I like the, I like the shortening of it. It's, you know, mural in the Love Their Bucket Alley is so long.
Okay. Long as you're good with it. This will be a motion acknowledged receipt and to approve or not to approve the Art in the Bucket Alley.
Leather Bucket Alley.
Leather Bucket Alley, excuse me. It's very sort of alliterative. And Celine Main Street Annual Renewal.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Moved by Gierba to acknowledge and to approve. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Harmon. Acting City Manager Cole, is there anything you'd like to add at this time?
This is just in addition to all of the wonderful things that we have said about Celine Main Street in the last two hours or so, but the city of Celine is eternally grateful for what Celine Main Street does for the city. It was so well here, as each one of the council members kind of went through your work and what you've done for the last year. And for me, much like Councilmember Rice, when I was at the murder mystery and I was talking to folks, and they said, oh, we found this on social media. We're from Ohio. I was so excited. So what you're doing is working. Keep doing it. Keep doing more of it. And we're very grateful for that part of it. And we're looking more for more economic development within the city of Celine, and that's something that I'm very much looking forward to working with, dance while along. So with that being said, in front of you now, we have our annual renewal, and we also have, I know we've talked already about the art loft that Mary will be, excuse me, Director Dedling will be doing behind the Michigan corridor there. And we have a good direction to go on that. Attached to find is the standard contract. It's a renewal very similar to, it's been the past several years. For you to consider, it was brought to my attention that our work plan is a dated work plan. And I am happy to, to do the work to put that together now for you to consider. Or if it's something that you want to get us, you know, we can pass this with, with, you know, approval, that might have to come later. We just didn't realize that it was kind of an older work plan.
Sure. Okay. Are there questions or comments for the Acting City Manager? I'll start with Councilmember Rice.
I just want to say that this is one of the first years that, like, I felt completely comfortable knowing, even this is an older work plan, I know what you're doing with the money, and I know what you're bringing back into the community. So this is kind of a no-brainer for me at this point.
Councilmember Gierba?
Okay. What do we represent now of their entire budget?
Could you repeat that question?
What, what does this dollar amount represent of their entire budget at this point?
So...
You want to come to the podium, Mary? I'm sorry. I just want to get you on the record.
So as of last year's budget, including all fundraises and everything, it came up to between 15 and 20%. So I think like 17 and a half percent, I think is...
So from my perspective, the amount of red tape and bureaucracy and everything you need don't justify the craziness that we could do. As long as you continue to do the work, provide us the report, and continue like this, I think that's sufficient.
Thank you. We would always accept more.
Well, I know you'd accept more, but at this point, I think we don't want to necessarily go over the top like the federal government does with the state of Michigan.
Let me jump. I want to get everybody first, Councilmember Rice, and then I'll jump back to you. Mayor Pretem Dillon, questions or comments?
Yeah, sort of just, and this is not a Main Street thing, it's sort of an internal process. So I'm kind of confused how Art in the Bucket and the annual got combined into one thing, since there's nothing here about Art in the Bucket.
Please forgive me. We did leave the Art Bucket on the second agenda item. We were going to consider both at the same time, but we decided in the last minute to move Mary's presentation up into the presentation section.
Okay. So what exactly are we approving on Art in the Bucket?
So we've already talked about Art in the Bucket. We were, we were considering basically how you wanted the artwork to be reviewed and selected. We got good, I heard you, we got good responses back from that. Do you feel comfortable knowing how we're going to go about selecting the artwork?
Yes, I'm, I'm prepared to put a call out, call for out tomorrow. And, and then we should be able to get the timing right, so that I can then bring the final designs to you on August 3rd, which I believe is the date we talked about.
If it, if it needs to be pushed to that second meeting in August, that's fine.
Okay. I will, I will, but I think that I can do it.
If you can turn it around by the 3rd, we will certainly accommodate you. Okay?
I just was trying to figure out if these should be separate motions, because they're not really the same thing. The other thing that I want to just make motion, make, because it's what I do, is that we once again have a contract in front of us that has no attachments to it. The exhibits are not here, which tie back to the agreement. And it's really unfair for council to be expected to approve contracts that are not complete. So I asked for this earlier. I still haven't received it. And it's making me concerned, because we have And it's making me concerned because we have had errors in the past where there were things that we thought were included, or we didn't realize were included. So moving forward, contracts, if they need to be approved, must be complete, in my opinion. And then, yes, we talked about the document that was the Working Group Outcome Report, which is a little bit dated. I know what you're doing, and I think we all do, so I'm just not sure what your timeline is for a refresh of that data.
My thoughts, and I discussed this with Acting City Manager Cole, as well as that maybe we should revisit it and go over with the new city manager.
No, that's perfect. Like I said, a lot of it moves forward, and it's more on our end of what are we supposed to be doing to better support you moving forward? So, and then I do have one last question that we, when we talk about money for this, is do we know what's the dollar amount of in-kind services that the city provides to Main Street, and do we cap it?
It's kept at $20,000, and thus far this year, we've not even met, I think, about $8,000 of it.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Rice, I believe you had additional question or comment?
Well, I just wanted to, we laughed a moment ago about more money, but I did want to make the point that, I reiterate every year, that if there's something that comes up over the fiscal year, that Main Street's like, oh my gosh, we have this amazing thing, but we need like this many more dollars, please bring it to council so that we can take a look at it and help and see how we can help you with that. Because, you know, these actual, like, tactile things that are being developed are amazing, and they're really bringing, you know, interest to our community. So if there's something that you have, and it's ready to go, and it's shovel-ready, but you're missing something, please bring it to us.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Any subsequent discussion on the motion? Thank you, Mary, appreciate it. We have a motion on the floor moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Harmont, to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We come to the discussion portion of our agenda, reports, other announcements, including updates from boards, commissions, committees, or task forces. Councilmember Harmont.
I don't have any.
Councilmember Lesch.
Successful jazz in the park this weekend, other than a little bit of rain.
Councilmember Seale.
Thank you, Governor.
Mayor Potem Dillon.
ZBA has been quite active. We have meetings month over month, so we will again have a meeting in August. We, the Policy Committee, met prior to the start of this meeting tonight, and we will be bringing forth an ordinance probably at our next meeting for first review, first reading, rather. And then, I'm trying to think what else. Oh, I did have an opportunity, I want to just make mention of this, that the Michigan Department of Civil Rights hosted an event late last week that I was able to attend regarding artificial intelligence and municipalities. It was very interesting. And the gist of it is that we need to embrace AI, but we need to also be cautious at the same time that it absolutely needs human interaction to it. And that it can absolutely have bias to it if left unattended. So that's something that we need to look at moving forward. The other big part of the conference was talking about data centers. And that municipalities need to be mindful of data centers that are popping up. Right now, the state does not have guidance on them and some regulations because they tend to be a very large draw on utilities for municipalities. So that is something that we will need to look at moving forward, should that be an issue for us.
I have two. And Acting City Manager Cole, you're welcome to chime in here. We spoke briefly in advance of tonight's meeting about the continuing fiber optic and cable work that's being done in the public right of ways in both commercial districts and residential neighborhoods, much to the detriment or chagrin of our constituents because the notification is not proactive. Of course, they do not need to receive approval or consent from city government prior to executing said work. If individuals have questions or concerns, there was an excellent, very thorough overview of the issue provided via the city's website and Facebook page and other social media accounts about two weeks ago. So we would direct individuals to review that information. Barring that, if folks have questions or concerns, do you want to reiterate who they should reach out to within city government?
Right now, currently, they should reach out to Director Hopola at DPW. We're kind of tracking and trying to monitor the complaints as best as we can. Obviously, the city of Celine has no hand in this project, and we're trying to mitigate the aftermath of what's happening as best as we can alongside our residents. But it certain, seems to be not just a city of Celine problem, it seems to be a regional problem as these companies go through and update the fiber throughout this area.
And then the other issue that I mentioned briefly to the city manager earlier today is I've received some inquiries, and perhaps your office has as well, from concerned residents and community stakeholders regarding a proposed package plant as part of a Toll Brothers development in Lodi Township. That permit, excuse me, an application is before Eagle currently. There's a number of people who have written in to oppose the proposal, including Representative Morgan Foreman and State Senator Sue Schink. We have expressed concern over private package plants in the past. And so my recommendation would be to have the Acting City Manager look into this issue a little bit more and possibly send a letter to Eagle and to our state elected officials in addition to the individuals that were previously named. Eagle, the state of Michigan more broadly, continues to approve private package plants. I think the private sector does a lot of things well, a lot of things better than the public sector. Providing private water and sewer utilities is not one of them. These facilities are never appropriately manned or staffed, they eventually fail, and the HOA or condo association does not have the finances or bandwidth to repair, renovate, or rehabilitate. And then it usually falls on the adjacent municipality to help. So I think it would be very incumbent and advantageous for us to send a letter expressing our chagrin at yet again, another application for a private package plant in the broader Celine community.
That's true.
It's in Lodi Township. If I can get you the actual address, it's a development proposed by Toll Brothers. So I think it's being currently, it's currently working its way through the Lodi Township planning and zoning process as we speak.
I believe it's Syle Church in Wagner.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
And the area where property hasn't been developed.
Yep. Mr. Gearbaugh?
There was no planning this month, that was canceled. Risk management meets tomorrow. Just a couple of things, when we were meeting with, or Jeff Irwin was having his coffee hour, a number of things that he was sharing with us and about the state, and it's unbelievable the amount of craziness that's happening because of not only our own House leadership not moving forward the budget, but also all the craziness that's coming from the federal aspects of money having to be moved from one area to the other to cover it, and the craziness that's gonna be happening with Medicaid and Medicare, or Medicaid in terms of our funding. There were a couple of things that he brought up that were kind of interesting that he's moving on, is trying to address this issue with contamination and environmental pollution, and trying to reset the clock so the statute of limitations don't necessarily run out, and trying to make the ownership and whoever is responsible for it, trying to improve that type of thing. But the one thing that was kind of interesting is that they're trying to work on the fact that with like our trailer park, the water system within the park itself doesn't have any oversight. And so they're trying to address that system because unfortunate like us, it stops at the street. And so if there's problems with the water system within it, there's nobody that really enforces it clearly, unless you really start pushing on it from a civil point. And so hopefully that'll come through. And then just some other things related to, of course, the issue redressing these food cuts, the idea of lunch for, that's being eliminated, but we need to look at to see whether or not the state's gonna have to shift funds for that. So when we look at concerns, we're hoping that there may be some money allocated. There's a proposal of $50 million potentially going into the dam safety fund, but there's arguments on that, whether or not the money's gonna be used for the removal of dams, or if it's gonna be allowed to be used for the repair and replacement. But of course, it's all up in the air, depending on what happens in the House. And then lastly, I just want to let everyone know that the Historical Society will have its yard sale at Renshler Farm on August 8th and 9th. There's still vendor areas available. We have an application on our line if you'd like to address it, and we invite everyone else. It's from 9:00 to 5:00 on both that Friday and Saturday, and it is a fundraiser for us, but it's also a good example of, we bring in approximately 2,000 people into our community, and it helps to address, and they come in and go through the entire community so they do see Celine. And it's one of those things that we like to do because it's a way of exposing new people to our community and helping just bring more awareness. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rice?
Couple of bits from parks. If you haven't had a chance yet to see the Risen Park Pollinator Garden, several of the plants are starting to bloom, which is fantastic. This is, yeah, they were just planted, so next year, you know, they'll come in even more full, but it's fun to see them blooming already. The Friends of Celine Parks Initiative, if you haven't signed up, go to the Celine Parks and Rec website, there's a newsletter you can sign up for. We're looking for ambassadors for parks, so we have an ambassador for Taft, Risen, Salt Springs Park. We're looking for folks who, you know, live near or utilize the parks and other neighborhoods just to kind of, you know, walk through, email the Friends of the Parks folks and say, hey, there's something missing here, or we need something here, or to, you know, anybody with a green thumb, get into the flower containers below some of the signs, things like that. So Friends of the Parks program, again, on the Celine Parks and Recs website. The other thing that we're dealing with now is, so we identified that Brecken Park, this was in the Parks and Rec master plan a few years ago, would be an ideal location, and community members had requested that it have a dog park. So we raised the funds for the dog park, we got Cares Mill money. And when we went out there to scope out the dog park, we were met with neighbors who are opposing a dog park. So we're gonna take just a tiny step back, have some community conversations, see what those oppositions really are. We had some members attend the Parks Commission last week to express their opposition. We want to provide some additional information about benefits of dog parks, things like that. But one of the things that really has come up lately in the Parks Commission with community input is that we've recognized that the community does not necessarily understand exactly what commissions do. In parks, we run into it often with, what's the difference between DPW and the Parks Commission, and who can do capital planning, and what is the Parks Commission tasked with doing? So one of our ideas was to have all of the community-based commissions attend the farmer's market, summer fest, and Oktoberfest as allowed. Perhaps have a table at the, you know, the rest of the farmer's markets have a table for one commission this week, another commission next week. So I'm wondering if the Acting City Manager could connect us with Danielle and talk about farmer's market, and then I can reach out to my contacts at Oktoberfest or Summer Fest and see if we can have city commissions' tables there so that we can talk to the community a little bit more about, you know, why you would want to attend one of our commission meetings, the types of things that we, you know, bring to council or bring to city staff from those commission meetings, what some of our objectives are. Because we're really finding that the community does not quite understand what our purpose is. And I think just face-to-face would be nice, you know, in the ensuing months, and then maybe something in the winter, we could do a town hall or something like that. But, you know, while it's nice out, we might as well just be face-to-face with folks. So maybe if Ms. Cole, if you and I can work together, and maybe we can put something out to the other commissions and say, hey, this is what we were thinking, and everybody, you know, chime in as needed, and if we can get to the farmer's market.
Okay, absolutely, no problem.
Cool. That's it for me.
Very good. Well, at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to convene into closed session.
I had some items that I had asked at discussion.
Okay, they were not added when we approved the agenda, but go ahead, you can share them under reports or announcements.
So one was the transition team. I would, with knowing that we are going to have a transition of city management, I do think it's very important that we reestablish the transition team and start understanding what tasks Ms. Cole has right now, what will be the priorities for the new city manager from this body, and what is going to, you know, figure out that timeline and be able to support a very smooth transition. So I want this body to start to kind of consider that, and maybe at our next meeting, take formal action. I would also like to, at our next meeting, have a conversation regarding the Bixby Marionettes. We had a presentation, and we sort of left it that we were going to develop a contract and a plan moving forward. I'd like to kind of firm that up and get an understanding that we are all on the same page with as to what that is. And the last issue is that we had a sort of a miscommunication regarding park rentals, and I think there is definitely an opportunity to have some policy review and understanding a better way in which we can collaborate both within the city and so that our community can better utilize our resources effectively. So those are three things that I'm hoping can come back to us at our next meeting.
Okay, at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to convene into closed session at 9:18. We would convene into closed session under MCL 15.268D to consider the purchase or lease of real property.
So moved?
Moved by Gearbaugh, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Potem Dillon. The clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gearbaugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Seale?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Yes.
Councilmember Lesch?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmont?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Dillon?
Yes.
Yes, we are convening into closed session at 9:19. We will reconvene at the conclusion of the closed session. Yes, we are convening into closed session at 9:19. We will reconvene at the conclusion of the closed session. Very nice. Very nice. Okay, at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to reconvene into regular session at 9:35. Is there such a motion?
So.
Moved by Harmout is her second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protim Dillon. The clerk will please call the roll.
Councilmember Geerbaugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Seo?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Yes.
Councilmember Lesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmout?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Dillon?
Yes.
Mayor Marlowe?
Yes, we are reconvened into regular session. We come now to the second public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any person may come forward and make comment to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Those wishing to speak are requested but not required to state their name and address for the record. Please note that generally, council will not answer questions during the public comment period, but may have some remarks subsequent to it. Are there any public comments? Please, you'll have three minutes. Make sure the green light is illuminated at the base.
Yeah, this thing is already going, I think.
Yep, you're good.
I just want to thank Chuck, Jack for, for City Council. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any additional citizen comments? Mary?
So I don't know if this was something for Director Havla who addressed, but on the new demolition project that is across from Harper and on Yarver's Lane, I noticed that there's a lot of structures that are just open to the area and I was wondering if caution tape could be put up just to forewarn anyone that they probably shouldn't go near it as it's being demolished. I noticed on most demo projects, they have the caution tape up, so I just was wondering if that was something that we could put around that area.
Go ahead.
I actually raised that issue to our community development director yesterday.
Oh, oh, really?
So hopefully they'll do it. Yeah, it should not have been left that way without having some kind of fencing or stuff around.
So it's actually not a DPW, it's more of a downstairs, community development, as District Geerbaugh referenced, that does building, inspecting, zoning, planning, some economic development, and then code compliance.
Okay, I know they have a fence around there, but I don't know how much of the fence actually keeps people out.
Yeah, that really should not have been left like that. So we, I definitely saw that concern. Thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you, Mary. Appreciate your patience this evening. Clerk Royal, any comments provided in writing in advance of tonight's meeting, which the individual wanted the remarks right at this time?
No, but I have one comment.
Okay.
I had said earlier that the ballot language needs to be here by September 12th. I'm wrong. It's August 12th.
August 12th, okay. So if we didn't approve it, if we didn't approve a ballot proposal for a street millage at the next meeting, we would need to call a special meeting to do it because we would be, we would be beyond the deadline if we tried to consider it a second meeting in August. Okay. Very good. Appreciate the clarification. If there's nothing further to be brought before Celine City Council this evening, the chair would be delighted to entertain a motion to adjourn at 9:38 PM. Moved by Geerbaugh is her second?
Second.
Seconded by Lesh. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Those who say nay, ayes have it. Any who's adjourned, thank you all.
Mary?